Gentlemen, I call this meeting ordered today for our August 8, 2024 board meeting. Welcome everyone here today. Welcome everyone here that's in the virtual world. And hopefully we won't get too much rain tonight for this meeting, but we'll take whatever the good Lord gives us. Our first item on the agenda is an indication by Pastor Lee Farmer.
How's everybody tonight? Let me offer a prayer on your behalf.
Good, good.
Thank you, sir. Gracious God, thank you for blessings and for opportunities as our Board of Supervisors tonight meet. I pray, God, you give them wisdom and direction so that they'll help us to have a better community throughout our entire county. Lord, we're just a few days from school starting, so we lift up our schools, our students, their families, our administration, and teachers, and the entire staff, and pray that they have a blessed and safe school year. Thank you for all of our county employees who serve this county so faithfully. Continue to watch over and bless. Guide this meeting tonight. I pray that all that's done will be for your glory, and it'll be best for our community. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, we all stand to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. In the Republic, where there stands one nation, God our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or deletions to the agenda? If you do not, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, approval of minutes. Gentlemen, we have a July 11, 2024 meeting. We have a July the 25th, 2024. Any deletions or changes to those minutes? If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve, and you can, one motion will take care of both of them.
Move to approve. All.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next is presentations. Northumberland County Public Library. Ms. Blue, will you be so kind?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's great to be here. I have with me our Board of, our President of our Board, Jamie Tucker, and of course, I'm Jane Blue, the Library Director. The Northumberland Public Library has embarked on a project of constructing, constructing a public pocket park on the rear lot of the library. This park will enhance the quality of life for residents by providing a safe space for walking, reading, computing, and relaxing in nature. It will be a boon for individual wellness and serve as a communal hub fostering social interactions among neighbors, cultivating community involvement, and even increasing neighborhood safety by promoting an active public space. There is a gazebo plan to be constructed in the park that can be used for small music ensembles or just a sitting area. To fund the construction of the project, various grants and donations will be utilized. We broke ground on July 24th and are funding the project currently in stages with the goal of completion within a year. The Virginia Outdoors Foundation has an initiative called the Preservation Trust Fund Program, which provides grants for various methods of protecting open space for farming, forestry, and more. In addition to the grants for land protection, VOF also provides income-based cost-share assistance grants to landowners donating an open space or conservation easement to a locality. The grant will cover legal, storage, ship, and other costs associated with conveying an easement to VOF or a locality. In recent cycles, grant awards have averaged $150,000 per project. However, there is no cap. We are applying for a VOF grant and will be requesting $134,228.30 for this project. However, we have been told by the Grant Program Director that we are only eligible for a grant to pay for the construction of the pocket park if the property is placed under a conservation easement. This would guarantee that the property remains a park in perpetuity, an open-spaced land under the Open Space Land Act, Virginia Title 10, Section 17. Since the property is owned by a nonprofit organization, to meet the program's requirements for the grant, the library needs a public body such as Northumberland County to be our partner and hold an open-space easement on the land. In our case, the open-spaced land would mean any land provided for park or recreational purposes and would assist in the shaping of the character, direction, and timing of community development. We are pleased that this property could be placed in a conservation easement because we believe that the benefit of the pocket park will be reaped for many decades to come, and having the land in a conservation easement would ensure that the park remains in public use, protected, and well-maintained for future generations. I am here today asking the Northumberland Board of Supervisors to please approve my request to have the Northumberland County hold the small, less than one acre lot behind the library in a conservation easement. We have acquired the recommended VOF deed language for the easement document and are anxious to see the land protected, be a green space to improve mental health, and become part of the neighborhood identity. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain any questions.
All right. Any Board members have any questions for Ms. Blue?
I'm going to show the picture.
Oh, yes. And I do have a picture of what we have accomplished so far. I just have one, but I'm happy to send it via email, but you can keep that copy if you want to pass it around.
Anyone have any questions? Looks good.
Thank you. The walking trail is exactly a quarter of a mile, so if you walk four times, you've got your mile in for the day.
Tedlock, you have any comments, anything? All right. All right. Any comments, questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blue, is this a daytime use, usage, once it's completed?
Yes, but anyone can use it at any time. It's public.
Anytime during the day?
Anytime during the day, yes. We do have lighting back there, though, so if somebody wanted to sit and use our Wi-Fi, they do in the parking lot anyway. They could sit on a bench and do that as well.
That was my next question. If you said nighttime, I was going to ask you about lighting.
Yes, we do have lighting, and it is dark sky compatible ambient lighting.
Is any of this in the, in the support zone area?
Well, what I would suggest is, since it is a Virginia Outdoors Foundation easement request, that the Board, if you're interested in doing this, have staff look at it in its conformity to the comprehensive plan and also get with legal counsel on potential next steps if, if everything checks out.
Okay. So what the Board would like to do?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have staff review the request, see it's conformity to the comprehensive plan, and have staff also get with legal counsel on the matter to see what we can do.
All right, that's fine. I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ladies, we will go ahead and check that out for y'all.
All right, come over and walk it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Walgrove, Ms. Booth?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I'm just going to walk you through our back-to-school message that we send out weekly, and our school board is welcoming everyone back. Our chairman is Mrs. Betty Christopher, Vice Chair, Mrs. Dana O'Beir, Dr. Dave Curran, Dr. Cheryl Davis, and Mrs. Denise Maseek. Our first day of school is this Monday. We are so excited. The school day is 8:00 a.m. to 3:05 p.m. Students can be dropped off for car riders at 7:45 a.m. We do, on page two, have all of our bus routes posted. This is on Facebook. It's on our website. And all of our students and parents received this information in their email yesterday. We will push that out again on Sunday around 1:00 p.m. Again, breakfast and lunch this year is free for all students. We're very proud of that because we participate in the community eligibility provision. On page three, if anyone has any questions, we've provided contact information for all of our principals at the elementary, middle, and high schools. We also have given information on how to contact school counselors. You'll see my contact information is there with my cellphone. People are welcome to call me anytime if they have major questions or concerns. And we are welcoming our Assistant Principal, Dr. Karen Leslie, and she also has her cellphone provided for everyone. If you turn, you'll see that for the second year, we will continue with just enhanced safety. We will be metal detecting. At the bottom of page four, you'll see a calendar spotlight. You can check out just how that calendar is going to be scheduled in August, September, and October. The full calendar is located on the website. On pages four and five, you can see convocation highlights. We had an amazing convocation on Monday. That was August 5th. We did some special recognitions. Many of you know Mrs. Martha Hicks, and this is her 50th year as an educator, so we had a big sheet cake, and we sang "Happy Work Anniversary" to Mrs. Martha Hicks. In the middle there, you can see our little kindergarten students. King Carter White and Gentry Orum led the Pledge of Allegiance, and that was very special. We also had our color guard and our dance team there. Down bottom left is Dr. Travis Burns presenting, I believe, a crown in just celebrating Martha Hicks. We also, at convocation, we had the boats that the students made at the Reedville Fisherman's Museum as part of the Talented and Gifted Program over the summer, so we actually were able to have the wooden boats that they created on the stage, and that was very special. Mrs. Katie Wilkins and her husband helped us with that. On page six, you see, this is still convocation, the faculty, and then they had a motivational guest speaker, Cherry Brooks. You may know him from Facebook. He is a comedian, but also he did a professional development for us. It was magnificent, so great day. Also this week, we went to National Night Out and tried to partner, support our Sheriff's Department and Emergency Services, so that was a nice evening as well. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Finance.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Hello. Don't have a whole lot to share with you tonight. We've been busy trying to close out 2024 and getting started with fiscal '25. We haven't spent a whole lot on the new fiscal budget since our July pay for teachers comes out of the previous year. So to give you an update, we've currently spent $465,442.48, so needless to say, there are no negative line items. And our August payroll will be our first full payroll that includes all employees, so things will start to grow a little faster, starting this payroll by the end of this month. You'll have any questions for me?
Board members have any questions? Any questions for Ms. Booth? No questions? Sorry.
I have a sound for the superintendent.
Well, I wish y'all good luck on your first day of school.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayden. Mr. Longhead.
Go ahead.
Your enrollment, do you have, how many students do you have this year?
Yes, so we have about...
Do you have that?
I don't.
I would look it up, but let me look that up, and I'll report out after I look it up. I don't want to give you the wrong answer because I feel like it's going to end up in the paper, so I'll go back and look it up.
For each school?
Yes, sir. I can do that.
And how many do we have going, going to the VOTEC?
Again, I'd have to look it up. I didn't bring those exact numbers with me, so I can look it up and send it to everybody.
And the STEM program? Please do.
Okay, no problem.
Um, I got a grandson that's starting school there this year, and we went to open house. All he talks about is his teacher now.
Aw. What grade is he in?
Kindergarten. And I want to pass this on Mr. Lurba, the bus driver. This little fellow gets very nervous, so he has to plan things out, so he had him go meet his bus driver along with his teacher. So we went by Mr. Lurba's house, and he got permission to get him on the bus and explain things to him, and that made him feel a little more comfortable, so now he's looking forward to Monday because he's going to big kids' school.
That warms my heart. We have the most wonderful bus drivers, too. They end up being family members to our parents and our students, so we're, we definitely have a very special community.
That's always good to have.
That's right. We have a school board meeting on Monday at 6:00 p.m. if you would like to attend. Monday's going to be a big day. We have the first day of school plus a school board meeting, so, but we appreciate your support, and I'll follow up with numbers. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thanks. Take care.
Thank y'all. All right, our next item would be update from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal?
Good evening.
How you do, sir?
I'm doing well. It's good to be with you all. We have been busy. Cleaned ditches in Indian Creek subdivision, Bluff Point Road, Myler Road, Gardie's Mill Road, Dodlet, and Font Hill Road. Cleaned pipes at Harry Hogan in Indian Creek subdivision and on Gardie's Mill. I've cut brush on Conan Stage, Reed Avenue, Fleet and Circle, Bush Mill, Haxneck, Route 200, Jesse DuPont, and on Sunny Bank Road and Old Typer's Road. We repaired a slope on Shiloh School Road and repaired signs on Newman's Neck Road. We've graded gravel roads, patched potholes, and been mowing for site distance and addressing work orders countywide. We did have an isolated event on July 20th that closed Rehoboth Road and a couple other roads. That event was very impressive, both in the intensity of it and how isolated it was, but it was just the, what Todd would call down the county, southern into the county there, just outside of Kilmarnock, and that was some of the most intense rain I think I've seen in my career, and it's real impressive when you see, I believe those are seven-foot pipes, there are two seven-foot pipes under Balls Neck Road, and they're just flowing full, taking all the water they could get. But, you know, good engineering, it all held up, you know? We didn't have anything to fix after that storm at that location. But Rehoboth Road, bad, bad construction over years. Those pipes washed out, and we'll be working after this rain event is over, working there next week to replace those pipes on Rehoboth. That was the only area, that little area. Got, you know, eight, 10 inches of rain, but the rest of the, the rest of the county and the rest of the Northern Neck was good. So on the plan coming up, we have some more ditch cleaning planned in Sherwood Forest subdivision on Waverly Road, Candy Point Road, Monday Point, Fountain Gate, Flood Point, and Sidners Mill Pond Road. We'll keep up with all of our countywide efforts. We have the pipe replacement on Rehoboth, another one we're working on on Ganyan Road, and we have some pipe cleaning to do on Font Hill, Sidners Mill Pond, Folly, Waverly Road, Brickyard, Candy Point, and Liberty Road. On the pavement schedule, we still have the Slurry Seal routes, Lewisetta and Shore Lane. I do, I do expect them to come back with that second coat towards the end of the month, probably the week of the 19th or the 26th. Secondary six-year plan, we put Addy's Point on hold, so we're not working on that. It's still on the plan, but we'll, we'll let you all take that off in the spring when we do the update. On the structure and bridge, the scour repair that's been planned for Bush Mill Creek, that went to add in May. Bids came in a little bit over budget, but we're working to award that to the low bidder, and I have a pre-construction conference scheduled on the 20th of August. Just remember that there are four locations associated with that contract. Only one of them is in Northumberland. Three of them are in the Northern Neck, but as soon as we get a schedule from the contractor, I'll have a better idea when that's going to start and how that will impact Bush Mill Road. We are still accepting, accepting comments on the striping plans in Calio and Lotsburg through Monday, the 12th, so if anybody has any further comments on that, be sure to submit them. And obviously, tonight, we're watching Debbie come through. She did shift west, which has helped us a little bit. Winds are starting to pick up, and I think they're supposed to peak around midnight tonight, so we're monitoring those conditions, and we'll respond to callouts as, as needed. That's all, everything I had for you all. If you have anything for me, I'm happy to take your comments.
All right. Any Board members have any questions for Mr. Beal?
The, the striping plan in Calio that you're still receiving comments on, what was that again?
It's part of the road diet. In, in Calio, it'd be four lanes going to three lanes, and in Lotsburg, it's kind of a hybrid. The two-lane section would go to three lanes, and the four-lane sections on either end would go to three lanes.
I've asked about the Calio project a couple times recently, so what, what stage is it, and what is the next stage, and when will that happen?
The next stage will happen after the public comment period ends. We'll take all the comments, we compile them in a document, review them, and then we'll consider any that we feel like need to, requires to make changes to any of the plans, and then we do that, follow up with any changes that we make, and then that would all be compiled and sent to the chief engineer to send...
Your plan is going to happen. You're just taking into consideration public's comments. Is that correct?
I think that's the direction we're headed, but I wouldn't say it's a done deal until chief engineer signs off on it.
All right, is that all?
Oh.
Ms. Long?
Yeah, the grass cutting, have you finished, or what?
I'm sorry, the mowing, the primary routes is getting ready to start on Monday, so it'll just be the primary routes of mowing and later pickup countywide.
Okay, on Blunden Row connected to Northumberland Highway. When you drive up to the stop sign, you can't see down the road because of the grass. You have to almost pull in the road to see. It's pretty dangerous there.
We'll jump on that.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Bryan?
Lively Hill Road. The church had another accident in the cemetery this week, and a couple more graves got destroyed. They are asking, is there any way that E.D.O. would put at least rumble strips in the road coming in from village?
Oh, we'll look at it. We talked about that previously. I thought we already, I thought we already had them there. No? Okay. I'll check on it. I'll check on it.
Okay.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes. Mr. Beal, first of all, I want to say thank you for all the hard work that you and your people do. I know, I know we don't always have the time or the opportunity, but right now, I'm saying thank you to you for what you do and your people, especially your people at Lotsburg and Warsaw and Frederickburg, too, as far as that goes.
Thank you.
There is a situation right outside of Wycomica Church on Route 200 where the curb and gutter stops heading towards Kilmarnock. It's a problem there, and it's been a problem for, I know, over 25 years. I realize that you can't stop water from running across roads everywhere. I realize that, when we have downpours such as we have recently. However, Route 200 is a main thoroughfare in Northumberland County. We have two, 360, which is U.S. Route 360, correct? It's a U.S. highway, and 200. I myself have worked accidents there because of hydroplaning, and I think you will agree that hydroplaning is just as dangerous as any ice. The water comes across that road. It has no place to go down the gutter. As I say, there's been accidents there in the past, and I know it's been there, this problem for over 25 years. Back when Chuck Wilkins was sheriff, I got him to make a formal complaint about it, and he did, and they came down there and they did the same thing they always do. I'm not disrespecting the workers, but they come down there with a rake and a shovel and a, and a pair of clippers, and they cut the weeds and dig a little trench, and it works for a little while, but something needs to be done there, something on perhaps an engineering standpoint. That water comes across that road. Not only does it come up on the road, that road is crowned just like all roads are, high in the middle. It comes up over the crown, goes across to the other side, and that water stream covers about a 300 to 600-foot square area of highway. Again, I understand you can't stop the tremendous rainfall like we just recently had when it did, but it does it on regular cloud bursts, regular thunderstorms, especially if the ground is already wet. Certainly several times a year, we see this. And I like to see something more done other than just a little patchwork, because that's what we've had for the last 25 years, or not, maybe even longer, but I'm going to say at least that long. And to have that much water cover that much roadway in a main thoroughfare of Northumberland County, I think something needs to be done, and I've talked to other board members here about it, and if you need help from us in any way, shape, or form, I would like for you to call on us. But we would really like to see the safety. I don't want to see a school bus come down there and start hydroplaning. I don't want to see my wife come down there and start hydroplaning, and all it takes is one. This concerns me a great deal. As I said, I've worked accidents there when I was with the Sheriff's Department, and I've helped the state police work accidents there. We've pulled people out of automobiles and sent them to the hospital because they hydroplaned on that one piece of road. And if you just go down and look at it, I guarantee you, if you go down and look at it tomorrow, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. That water has no place to go.
Is it on the north end or the south?
This is on the south end, right at the end of the curb and gutter. You people put up barrels there when we had that last big rain, and I understand big rains like that, you know, but cause problems.
I'll look into it and report back to you.
But this is a main thoroughfare. This isn't Ganyan Road or Haxneck Road or Balls Neck Road. This is a main thoroughfare in Northumberland County, and people hit that place during the speed limit, which is 55, and it goes right down to 45. And like I say, to my way of thinking, hydroplaning is just as dangerous as any piece of ice ever was, and I appreciate you being able to try to help us out with this.
I'll look into it. I'll get back with you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And again, I'll say one more time, thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That will take care of me.
Beal, you had a good meeting overnight up there on the, on the striping changes.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Yep, I think you had pretty good attendance.
Yeah, I think it was about 50 we counted at the end.
I guess you'll wait to hear comments.
He got it on skates, too. He got it on skates.
He did. He made it out. All right, thank you, Mr. Beal.
All right, I'll take care of it.
All right. And if you can hold off some of this heavy rain tonight that we may get. Thank you, sir. All right, the next item would be the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Tedlock?
Yes, sir. For the month of July, we had 11 new structures. Total construction cost for the month, about $6.1 million. Total construction cost year-to-date, $38.7 million, which puts us above this time last year approximately $6 million. Do have a reappointment, George Rue for the Wellands Board, District Four, and he is willing to serve again.
All right, it was a pleasure to board.
I think we ought to keep him on. He's done a good job.
Make a motion if we hold on. Hold on to him.
I got a motion to approve him. Do you have a second? Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, Mr. Tedlock?
All right. Next item I have is the carryover funds from the ARPA Federal Funds from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 in the amount of $590,000. '24 to fiscal year '25 in the amount of $590,912.72 to 45-3507-8102.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And just to follow up on those particular funds, these are the remaining funds that we do have left from those CAREs slash ARPA funding types of monies that we did receive. And that particular amount, we are looking at the school sewer system drain field to cover that, that cost.
How much more time do we have on spending that amount, on spending that money?
We have to have all of the funds obligated by the end of this year.
End of this year? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Next item I have is the Forrester Grant Transfer Funds from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 in the amount of $3,239 to line item 1209-8,600.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Next several I have is related to the National Opioid Settlement Funds. The first one is for fiscal year '24 and monies that we received in that fiscal year. And that's dealing with the monies received under one of the settlements and also the interest received. That total is $1,888.20 to line item 47-5102-3200.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
All right. Next item is to carry over those opioid funds from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 in the amount of $79,706.18 to that same budget code, 47-5102-3200.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
And we've just received in fiscal year '25, new opioid settlement monies in the amount of $12,925.76, and would go to that same line item, 47-5102-3200.
Move to approve.
All right. Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
All right. And the last item I have is an MOU with the Northern Neck Sail and Power Squadron with the county to implement a owner life jacket program at the Great Wycomico kayak launch. The rack and the life jackets are there, and this MOU just lays out who is responsible for maintaining which part of that, that structure and the life jackets.
Much pleasure, the board. Or the board have any questions on this?
This, this is going to be put there. I don't know how long they're going to stay there. So if they disappear, what happens?
Well, that's what, one of the reasons why we wanted the MOU, so that the Northern Neck Sail and Power Squadron was going to maintain the, the life jackets at that location from that standpoint, and also from the condition of them as well.
Yeah, I saw that part in there, but, and I hope they, I hope nobody bothers them, but.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we hope.
You know.
Yeah.
This unit, I saw this rack down. They put the rack, in the rack there now, there's something there now.
There, there is.
And that's a roof to keep them dry?
It, it's partial shading, and it's under the bridge down there.
Yeah. All right. All right.
Any other discussion on this? If not, what's the pleasure, the board?
I move to approve the MOU.
All right. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Tedlock?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you have. All right. We have committee reports. Got one from Northumberland Public Library of Trustees, that's here. That's information.
That was the groundbreaking-
That's, that's, yeah, that's the groundbreaking on the park. All right. We'll move on to board supervisors' items, and that would be the approval of the check register. I hope everybody's had a chance to review it and all.
Yeah. Who they approve.
All right. Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I got a second. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is board comments. We'll start, we'll start with Mr. Fisher. Do you have any comments, Mr. Fisher?
Only that I spoke just a minute ago on that situation at Route 200 in Wycomica Church southbound, that I hope we can work with Mr. Beal and, and help him to get something done there. That's, it concerns me a great deal.
Yes, I agree.
You agree, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, we've had that problem before. We brought that up before in meetings.
And that, and that's the question. The question is not just a patchwork, something to engineerally be done that takes care of it from when they do it then on, something permanent to take care of it. That's my main concern. Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Bryan?
We had a little discussion last month on lodge landing, and I believe the Boy Scouts are going to go in and do some work down there. And one other thing we need to take a look at, are the rules posted down there, still posted? Or are there, I can't remember. I've been down there and I forgot.
I can't remember if, if they are down there.
I would have to look.
But it's, I think we've been having some campfires down there, and I don't think we need that down there. It's been some indications where it's been some, some burning down there. And we need to post some rules and all, I guess like you have at Marham Beach. And there are times when people are having some difficulty launching their boats down there, too, because there's so many people on the dock to fishing to, so they can get their boat over. So I think we need to try to get something posted down there, and what, what can go on down there and what can't.
All right.
And parking lots. This parking lot over here, something needs to take place of this grass. We need to spray it, reseal it. And the parking lot that's over by the school board office, that's behind the old ABC store, that's got enough grass in it, looked like you could cut it with lawnmower. That's, that's, that don't look good for the county to have something like that.
Are you talking about the main parking lot here at the courthouse also?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's got a lot of grass, and both of them got a lot of grass in them. You got to keep spraying them every year.
Well, the other one over there, it needs to be repaved.
Yeah, well, it's got a lot of cracks in it, and these cracks need to be resealed, keep that moisture out of it. And you could probably stand some resealing right here again, too.
Yes. And have you done anything with the trees at the old school board office lot in Lotzberg that BDOT was concerned about?
Mr. Albright has met with two companies.
Okay.
One of them was actually this morning, and he's waiting to get an estimate from, we've gotten, received one estimate, but we're waiting on the one that he met with today.
Okay.
So he has been working on that.
That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Long?
Yes. I know you had a, a chance to, to talk to the solid waste about the management. What improvement can we expect as far as those sites, solid waste sites?
Yes, sir. I, I did reach out to the, the manager and did ask that any holiday weekends that they look at having additional open tops to accommodate that additional garbage that we do, do have. I think it's just a matter of us staying on top of it and making sure that they have those additional containers there.
What's the update on the school board office, old school board office? Do we have it?
Again, that's wrapped up in, I think, the total discussion that the board is having with all of the county properties at this time.
Okay.
All right. I want to add something on to what Mr. Long said. I talked to some of the folks at the Lotzberg site, and they, we need to run a water line out there, so they got water out there in the wintertime. Because when it gets cold, we got a water hose, and that's on top of the ground. So they don't have anything to do any clean or any rinsing. It's cold. Another issue that they have out, too, is, is causing some of the, the trash being scattered all over the places, the turkey buzzards. He says it's nothing to, you go in the hut, and by the time you turn around and sit down, it's 10 to 15 turkey buzzards in the middle of the trash compactor, just spreading stuff all over the site. So we need to look at something on to kind of deter them from wanting to come in there.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah. What about the replacement of the water tower in Reedville? Haven't heard anything about that in months. Do we know any, anything about that?
I, I have not received any updates from the, the water company on that, but I can check into it.
I know there was one legal issue that involved an adjacent property owner, but I hadn't heard anything about it in a while.
Yeah. No, I haven't heard any updates on that.
That's it.
Got one question on trash. Go ahead. Mr. Tedlock, I know it used to be, time back, that the only way you could put trash in the local dumpsters was if you had a Northumberland County sticker on your car. Of course, we did away with the stickers because it was for Northumberland County residents only. And I, I remember you saying several meetings ago that the tonnage for the trash collection in Northumberland had gone up substantially, and that was one of the reasons that we have to pay them more money now than we were paying them.
Well, I, I think it's a combination of things. I think it's just the natural increasing cost that everybody's seeing, but along with that, too.
I know, I observed last week two George Nobles trucks at our dumpster then, and, on the way to Kilmarnock, unloading into the Northumberland dumpsters. So we, we are regularly taking Lancaster County debris on a regular basis with no problem. I mean, is that the policy?
Well, I can check into that and see what, what's going on.
Because I know at one time, you couldn't put it in there unless you had a county sticker. Of course, George Nobles is based in Kilmarnock. The Lancaster County units, they were filling up the dumpsters with two trucks, sat there and watched them do it. And I'm wondering if some of the extra tonnage that we're taking care of, paying for now, is coming from Lancaster County. Of course, that, that set of dumpsters is right on the line. You can throw a rock from the dumpster to Lancaster County line, so. But I just didn't know what the policy is currently about other counties bringing their refuge in here and dumping them in Northumberland dumpsters.
It's over a year's time. It's out.
Is any way we can get control on to it, of the attendance, knowing that it is a Northumberland County vehicle?
Well, I think some of the challenges you're going to have is if it's a truck going into Northumberland, they're making a delivery in Northumberland. Now, as far as commercial, it's, it's designed for residential trash. So that's something we, we can talk to waste management about.
I see contractors, contractors unloading debris.
Yeah. No, that, that's something we can talk to waste management about.
I, I see, I see difficulties in, in having it for Northumberland residents only, is being able to identify them.
Big difficulty, but.
There again, we're taking, we, we talked recently about the increase in tonnage, and more monies costing our taxpayers because we had this tremendous increase in tonnage was one of the factors.
Well, what about someone that comes into the county over the weekend and stays in an Airbnb? They're not a county resident. Are they allowed to use our facilities also?
They're allowed to use the facility. I don't know if there's any way you could do that and really, and really enforce it. I don't think, I don't know if that would be fair or unfair. I don't know.
Now, in the past, they would not have been allowed to because they didn't have county sticker.
But that still seems unfair if you've been here and you're running, running a house for the week or the weekend, you're dropping your trash off, and you got to take it somewhere else? No, I, I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
And, you know, you go buy a refrigerator, and the cardboard box is going to go in that dumpster. I don't see where that's a problem.
Rather have it in the dumpster than outside the road.
I'd, yeah, I'd rather have it there. But at least the highway's aren't as bad as it used to be. I don't know. I don't know if there's an answer, or we, or we just deal with it as we, as we've been doing.
As we've been doing.
I just don't know. We want to try to be fair to all the citizens of the county and plus the people that are coming in and out of here.
I don't know what Lancaster does. Does anybody know what Lancaster does? They just let it roll?
I'm, I'm just assuming that's what they do. Mr. Williams and Mr. Fisher, y'all have anything else?
Sir.
All right. One thing, I have a couple things here. Trees at this courthouse need to be, those lower limbs need to be cut off. They're hanging down too low. I know they interfere with guys cutting the grass. The sidewalk here, the cleaning of that has never been finished. Partial, there's areas that have never been cleaned. Had some of it done last year, and it hasn't been completed. That needs to be taken care of. Shrubbery around this building needs the trimming. A lot of it's got a lot of overgrowth into it that needs to be cleaned out. We need to get this courthouse looking a little bit better all the way around. And like Mr. Bryan said, a bit of parking lot over here, that definitely needs to be done again. That should be something that's done. Spraying should be done at least twice a year out there. Any mulch we need, put back around the shrubbery over here to make it look a little bit better. That needs to be done also. We got a trailer, so there's no problem to get it. We can get it and, we can get it there and get that stuff, spread it.
All right.
All right. That's all I have. Anybody else have any other thing they want to add? All right. All right. Mr. Morgan?
Public comments, please.
You don't have anything else you need to add, do you, Mr. Tedlock?
No, sir.
All right. First person on the sign-up sheet, Karen Piker. How you doing, ma'am?
I'm doing excellent. Thank you. Dr. Karen Pika, I rise today in my role as the District 4 Commissioner for the Economic Development Commission and also the Chair for the Commission. I know that you have a report in your package, which is also available to the public, that says that the EDC is partnering with the Northumberland County School System to sponsor a career and job expo. And so I want to let you know that we met last January, I think, as a group with the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and the EDC to talk about things, ways that we can also improve employment in the county. And so I'm working with Dr. Travis Burns at the school to sponsor a one-nine- So we're going to use that as a launchpad to try to share more information with residents and schoolchildren at all ages about the different types of career paths they can follow. We don't yet have a date set. I'm working with the school right now. Travis and I are working together to find a date that will work sometime in the latter part of October that doesn't interfere with any sports. But I wanted to let the Board of Supervisors know that your economic development commissioners are working very hard on a variety of fronts. And one of the things we're also going to try to do is start some type of mentoring program for job skills. So stay tuned for more and those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next person is Latasha Lee. Hello, ma'am.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Glad to see you here tonight.
Glad to see you too. I have one of my colleagues here, Ms. Tracy Harden, who's standing here with me as well. Good evening. I am Latasha Lee and as the President of the NCEA, which is the Northumberland County Education Association, and a dedicated teacher of Northumberland County Public Schools, I want to express my sincere gratitude for your support in approving our previous budget request. With the next budget season rapidly approaching, I feel compelled to address a critical issue that has significantly impacted our division last year. The delayed budget approval led to the unfortunate loss of many exceptional employees, one being my co-president, Ms. Shelby Brooks. This delay jeopardized our ability to fill key position crucial to our student's success. This setback put us at a considerable disadvantage in recruiting top tier educators and staff, potentially compromising the quality of education we strive to provide. To avoid a repeat of this situation, I humbly request that we prioritize a more expedited budget approval process for the upcoming school year. A timely budget approval will allow us to, one, retain our valuable staff members; two, attract highly qualified educators promptly; third, ensure all critical positions are filled before the school year begins; and last but not least, maintain our commitment to our educational excellence. Your support in expediting the budget approval process will be invaluable in helping us secure the best possible future for our students and our educational community. Again, I want to thank you all for giving me this time to speak during the public comment and I look forward to working with each of you to achieve our shared goals and making sure that all of the students here in Northumberland have the best possible education.
All right. Thank you and thank you for all you do down there too.
Thank you. And Dr. Worgo, she has some numbers she would like to come up and present for you all.
Okay. Come on up, Dr. Worgo.
Okay, I said to come back with a follow up. NES has 552 students. NMS has 287 students. NHS has 393 students. For a total school population of 1,232. The Northern Neck Tech Center has enrolled 53 of our Northumberland students. The Chesapeake Bay Governor's School has 22 Northumberland students. And Talented and Gifted has 175 students identified. And I'd just like to publicly thank our Director of Testing and Accountability, Mrs. Michelle Gordon, who was able to send these over to me. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice evening.
All right. Thank you for us too. All right. Next person is Thomas Hudn.
How you doing, Mike? Doing good. I really wasn't going to say anything this evening, but since Mr. Fisher brought up this trash situation, I worked in it for 23 years. But trash coming in from Lancaster County is only part of your problem. I came up here one time before. Not only are y'all getting trash from Lancaster County, you're also getting it from Middle Peninsula. And when I tell you a lot of it, a lot of it. I worked in Saluda. I followed vehicles every evening coming from Saluda. U-holes, pickups, coming into these sites. And I know they're throwing it there because I pulled in the site and sat there and watched. And one more thing, your trash situation that you have in this county is 30 years behind time. No one uses these open tops anymore. All the trash is compact. You can get anywhere from six to eight of those open tops, which are 30 yards, in a compactor can because it's compact. And the drawbar is not losing trash all over the highway. When I left and retired, we would store cans in the back at the main site over in Gloucester. I counted 47 containers in the back that needed work on so waste management can give you all what they don't have. They don't have anything. Waste management is not spending any money on anything. The guide was broke on the compactor over in Lancaster. The guy told me the tendency, it took them 11 years to fix the guide. They actually had, once we dropped the container there, had to take a fork lift and push the container up to the compactor. And probably over a couple hundred dollars, you could fix the guide. This is your problem. I came to the landfill one day. I saw a big U-hole in there. They turned them away. I followed that guy all the way back to Ditchley. He pulls up in there, I pull up in there behind him, he unloads. Pull one container up, 30 yards container up, one load. That's your problem. And everybody keeps saying the same thing and I say the same thing myself. When you're done away with those county stickers, that was a disaster. And I don't think you've seen anything yet because over in the Middle Peninsula, Matthews used to take everything, but they were getting a lot of trash from Gloucester. Because you have to, everybody in Gloucester have to pay to dispose the trash. So, back in over Northumberland, no one answering the question and just dump. That's your problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hudn. I have no one else on the sign up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right. Anyone in the virtual world tonight would like to speak? Have anybody online? Do we have anybody that's online tonight would like to speak?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Can you hear me? Hi there.
Oh, yeah, I'm. You can hear across the road.
Very good. My name's Katie Powers. We used to own an Airbnb out here and I just wanted to talk about the trash just really quick. As an Airbnb owner, I required myself to gather the trash as a Northumberland resident and take the trash myself from my guests. I never directed my guests to go to the dump because I am a resident here. So my, you know, obviously my suggestion is let's bring back the sticker. Let's put Northumberland stickers on our cars for trash use. So that's it. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. But anyone else that's online tonight like to speak? Anyone else that's online would like to speak in the public comment period? What else? All right. If you don't have anyone else that would like to speak, I'll close the public comment period.
Let's look into what Richmond County's permitting processes.
Want to check the surrounding counties?
I know Richmond County's got a permit you got to have. You got to have it displayed on your vehicle.
Mr. Tadlock, would you check the surrounding counties, see what they are required or requiring to be able to dump that trash?
Sure. Like Mr. Brand said, I think Richmond County has like a window mirror hanger of some sort, but I can check with the other county administrators.
If you don't mind checking somewhere. Anything else y'all want to check on?
Mr. Chairman, like a lot of other people, I have trash collection at my house where they come and pick up the trash.
Yeah.
And the prices is steady, steady going up. And if it keeps going up, I'm going to have to stop it because I just can't afford it. And I'm sure there's going to be other people in the county the same way. So that's going to, if that takes place with myself and other people, look at the amount of trash that's going to add to the dumpsters in the near future.
And increase that tonnage by a lot.
And the tonnage is dollars. That's why we had paid more money this year, more taxpayers' dollars, because tonnage was dollars.
Well, this did go back into rebidding. And I think Mr. Tadlock got two people, two companies that were interested or one.
It was just, well, two requested information, but we only received one.
And that doesn't help also.
Anopoly.
Yes.
Yep. So I don't know what to answer to everything is. We can certainly check to see what surrounding counties are doing. All right. Anything else, gentlemen? Gentlemen, our next thing would be convenient to a closed meeting, but I don't think we have enough time to discuss everything. Or do you think we have time, Mr. Tadlock?
We can, I think we can squeeze that in.
Think we can?
Yes, sir.
All right. You think we can? All right. If that's the case, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Sir, I need a motion that the Northumberland.
Was that Mr. Long?
Take a break.
You want to take a break for?
Okay.
Let's take a break.
Okay.
All right. Let's go ahead and have a recess. Thank you all for allowing us to take a little recess here. Everyone in the audience, would you please remove any hats that you have on? All right. We'll open our public hearings tonight. Our first request tonight is requested by Stephen W. Jet. Philip, would you take over?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Stephen W. Jet, owner and Old Glee Point LLC applicant for a conditional use permit to allow a utility scale solar energy facility on property zone A1 agriculture. The property is shown as tax map parcel 36-1-63 and is located on Old Glee Point Road.
All right, Mr. Jet, would you like to come up and say something, sir?
No.
Do you have a representative that would like to speak?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Rob Hickox with Pivot Energy.
What was your last name, sir?
Hickox. Hickox.
Okay.
Like Wild Bill.
All right.
We do have a PowerPoint presentation. If you'd like us to go through it.
All right. We can certainly put that up there for you.
So Pivot Energy is a solar developer. We're out of Colorado. We have a number of operations in the various states shown. We have about 1.1 gigawatts of actual projects in production and built. Next. We do a number of projects that are rooftop based, parking lots, parking garages. We also do our community solar, which are ground mounted systems commercially and for public use in utilities. Next, please. So the Folly, do you mind if we do both projects together or would you like me to separate it into each one?
Okay, if they do both together.
We have two separate public hearings. What do you say, Mr. Tadlock?
They were advertised separately, but I know Legal Counsel is online if you'd like to confer with them to see if both of them could be held at the same time.
Yes, that would be good if we could get some advice from Legal Counsel.
Hello?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Brendan Hefty. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Hefty. Certainly can.
Yeah, I think that because the two public hearings, we advertise for two separate public hearings, we need to have two separate public hearings. But I'm fine if the applicant wants to summarize both projects at the same time so that he doesn't have to do the same presentation twice. But we'd open two public hearings, one for each separate application, but I defer to the applicant if he's comfortable making one summary. That's up to the applicant.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That works for me.
All right. If it works for you.
All right. The VAL 028 Folly Road project is located along Northumberland Highway and the intersection of Folly Road. It's a three megawatt facility using 14.35 acres and a roughly 8,964 modules. It's a single axis tracker that follows the sun during the course of the day to maximize solar production. Next. So this is the site. It has, off Folly Road, it has a 50-foot setback from the road with also a guardrail in place for protection. It's probably more protected than most roads of this nature. We followed the V dot guide and then a greater than 50-foot setback off Northumberland Highway. All exposed sides of the facility will have an Ag style fence unless you would prefer a standard chain link security type fence. The Ag fence has differing sized holes for animals to go in and out as needed and, you know, deer jump over.
Height on it?
Yes. Bigger as it goes up on wooden post. We find that generally this type of fence kind of just blends with agricultural nature of the areas. We're open to security fence if that's what the board would prefer. And then on the exposed sides, we're going to put a double row of trees to create a screening. The goal is to minimize the view of the facility from the road. Interconnection will also be off Northumberland Highway and that will connect to the Dominion Transmission System. Next, please. The Old Gleve, the VAL 029 project, is a very similar sized project located off Route 200 on Old Glee Point Road. It's again, it's a three megawatt project using 18.61 acres and 9,720 modules. And again, this is another single access tracker tracking the sun. The site's a little different configuration, but again, it follows the setbacks in the ordinance of being greater than 50 feet off the road. And again, it will also have the double layer of trees for screening. Interconnection point will be off Gleve Road and travel underground to Route 200. Next, please. Can you skip this? It's not a community solar project. This will be power sold directly to Dominion Energy. Keep going. It's somehow picking up all of them. Was that the Purple Stick Drive? Was that the Purple Stick Drive? Not to waste your time, the projects, we do use sheep grazing as our primary vegetative control means. We are open to mechanical mowing, but primarily, we use three to five sheep per acre using local grazers. We have contracts with an outfit called Graze Landscaping and also a man named John Campbell who has a number of sheep. And they bring the sheep in and out. They also check on the sheep during the course of the week, making sure they have water as they move through the site. On top of that, hopefully, he gets it pulled back up. But a big question that comes up with solar projects, why do you site here? Why not, why here versus somewhere else? I have a picture of a Dominion hosting map that shows the lines that Dominion has, and they're transmission-capable lines, not the lines that generally power your homes. Those lines are running along 200 and running along Northumberland Highway, and those both run to the substations. Those lines can only withstand so much electricity being taken off them or added to them. And to that end, you try to locate your solar facility as close to that as possible. Building new lines and new transmission lines usually means talking to neighbors, getting new easements, and upfront costs. So this is the drawing, the map that shows the hosting capacity of the line share of Northumberland County. Our project is right about where it says, the little tag that says Folly is, and that intersection where red, blue, and yellow come together, that is Burgess. So the reason we are located there is that yellow line is the actual interconnection along Northumberland. If you follow the blue southwards, that's where it will intersect at Old Glebe, and that's why we are connected so close to that. The concern that comes up with residents are, if you allow one solar project, we're gonna have 100 solar projects. That is actually very hard to do, if not impossible. These lines can only take so much, and at a solar developer's expense, we upgrade these lines. Dominion does not do it as a courtesy, and that is about $400,000 a mile to build new transmission lines and add new yellow, red, and blue lines to hold that capacity. So if you looked closer, if some developer wanted to put something closer to the coast, it would be cost prohibitive. If they wanted to move it more inland, it would also be cost prohibitive at $400,000 a mile to build that out. The substation located in Kilmarnoch is a substation we're connected to for both of these projects. And being about 12 to 14 miles away, depending on which project, that substation only has the available capacity based on its design by Dominion to accept seven megawatts of electricity being generated. Both of our projects are both three megawatts each, so that leaves one and a half left. And the Dominion queue that allows us to apply their system, every project in their queue after us has projects of greater size, and we have a project that will actually use up the last 1.5 that's located in Lancaster County. So if these two projects are approved, all the capacity will be used up on that substation, and substations cost 10-plus-million dollars to build a new one to create more capacity, and no developer's gonna want to do that. You would have to build a 20-to-30-megawatt facility, which would be a couple-hundred acres of land, and to have that all in one parcel is impossible. Sure.
Are you suggesting that with the amount of electricity that these projects would put on the lines, that they would not be able to handle any more electricity?
No, they would still be able to transmit back and forth, power to your homes, power to the substation. Any more generation going into it, though, would overpower the substation.
So a project next door to this one that was generating the same amount of power that this one is would not be feasible?
Correct. So with, if Folly happened and Glebe didn't, there would be 4.5 megawatts available that a project could be done. If both are, it leaves 1.5 megawatts. The substation towards the north of the yellow, up the yellow line to the north of North umberland Highway, that substation is pretty much maxed out. We've had some positions up there, and we let them all go because that substation can't sustain it, and the cost to do the upgrades is unfeasible.
But that, that would be on Dominion?
That would be on the developer to make the substation upgraded. It's all the cost for upgrading substation, any line work to hook up our facility, any communication lines, that is all a burden that we bear. Dominion designs it and builds it, but we are ultimately charged. So that could be anywhere, depending on your location and the amount of work they would have to do. That study could be $500,000 to $2 million to $10 million, just depending on what needs to be done to make that connection happen.
But wouldn't it be in Dominion's best interest to upgrade the lines themselves to allow more solar projects?
No, because their lines are already doing what they're supposed to be. They're transmitting enough energy. And with these projects being out on the northern neck the way they are and away from Dominion's power generation, these facilities will put their electricity into your lines locally, and they will be, come down, and it will be used by the residents. Power doesn't go straight to the substation and come back out. It comes up, and then it just goes where it's needed.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. Was that power gonna be used here?
Yes, it will be 100% used here with the demand in the area and the size of the distribution mains, how they're located. It's, it's gonna go, it's gonna go straight up, and it's gonna come right back down.
And I guess the next question is, is it gonna lower our utility cost?
That, I can't say. This is not for the benefit of Dominion. We are selling the power to Dominion. This isn't a community solar program, so we're not offering, there's not an incentive to residents. Dominion is your power provider, so any rate decrease would be at their discretion. We have no, we're basically power wholesaling. So we are just an alternative generation means.
Did you say it's not a benefit to Dominion?
To?
Dominion.
Oh, no, it's, it's, we aren't-
Dominion would not have to generate as much electricity-
True, but they're purchasing it from us. So-
At a lesser cost than it would, than they would have to generate it for, or that they would pay to generate it themselves?
It's, it depends on the type of generation they're doing at certain facilities. I think they aggregate it all together and come up with an average number. They buy it from us at a tariffed price that we negotiate with them. They do have clean energy goals that they're required to hit, so it is in their interest, instead of owning assets that are renewable and managing them, to just purchase the power from developers.
All right. But does Dominion have to buy the energy?
They don't. They solicit a proposal asking for developers of renewable energy, what would you sell your power for to us? And then they select a number of facilities and say, we will buy power for eight cents on the megawatt from you, maybe five cents on the megawatt from another. It just depends on what the negotiated tariff rate becomes. So we bundle a number of sites together and come up with a number for them, and we submit it, like submitting a construction bid. It's the same process. What, what can we do for you?
And the larger the megawatts, the better the price that Dominion would get probably?
Ultimately, yes. Our portfolio with them is about 42 megawatts, and that's, these are included, and then a number of our other facilities in Virginia.
So is that agreement already made as to what you would sell that electricity to them for prior to you coming to us?
Yes, but it hasn't been signed. It is, we've discussed the pricing. It has not been signed, and the pricing will fluctuate based upon these decisions. There's, they're kind of ships in the night. These RFPs come out, and you have to respond to them. But the development process is, you know, a back-and-forth process and collaborative with your municipalities and your boards and the developers. So it's not something we've signed and we're legally held to, but it will go towards that.
Now, these solar panels that you are proposing, it doesn't take much light for them to generate electricity, I think is what I've found out.
That is correct. A flashing light in the middle of the night can energize them.
And I like the older panels that you, that some companies have used before that have to have right much sunlight in order to generate electricity?
No, these are the top-of-the-line, the most efficient borosilicate panels that we have. We do not manufacture, we buy ours. So the, the goal is to minimize panels to minimize land use. So as panel technology grows, they become more efficient. So less panels, they, more efficient in the transformation of light to energy.
All right. Efficiency rating and life?
The life is going to be 35 years. That's the general lifespan of the project. Solar farms, over the course of a year, light intensity varies on the planet, you know, through seasons. It's anywhere from 25 to 50%. Depends on how much light you get. I mean, obviously, it gets dark, it gets cloudy some days, overcast. A day like today, electricity would be produced, it's gonna be far lower than a bright sunny day in the middle of summer. And that's another advantage of having a tracker system. You're capturing that light through the course of the day at its zenith, instead of being stuck at a fixed tilt, and you just slowly get less and less as the sun moves.
Go ahead. I didn't mean to-
No, no, these are all great questions. Saves a couple slides.
I had a question regarding the buffing, buffering zone.
Sure.
You said you were gonna plant trees around one portion of it.
Yes, the exposed portions that would be seen from the road.
How tall, how tall are these trees when you plant them, and do you have any idea how much they grow in a year's time?
The trees will probably be in the six-to-eight-foot range. They're not gonna be your typical short landscaping trees, and we're gonna wait two to three years. They should be at full, if not-
What is a landscaping tree?
Like a typical shrub that you would go to get lowes, that's only about this high. We would plant something this high, right out of the gate. So we want it to be as close to the fence height as possible.
Are these trees, are they pine, gum, or oak, or what are they?
They will likely be an arborvidae or a type of evergreen that will always provide a good coverage. You know, a deciduous tree that would shed its leaves every year would make it visible in the fall, and that would be an awesome, another maintenance concern. Leaves blowing on the road, leaves blowing on the panels. So keeping evergreens as a perimeter cover.
And you think they'll grow approximately how much per year? If you don't know the answer, that's-
I, I don't. I am, I am not an astute arborist.
I'm just trying to get an idea of how long it'll be before this thing will be shaded?
It should be two to three, two to three years.
Two to three years.
Yes.
Anything else? That's all right now.
All right. Can you go to the next slide, please? There's also some current concerns that, you know, community members tend to have, and it's something that we've really liked to discuss, erosion. Where the land is going out of agricultural production, but we will be planting what we call is a fuzz-and-buzz mix. It has wildflowers that is for bees, but also allows for our sheep grazing. And these plants have a deeper root system than typical crops. That contributes to holding the soil levels together. Ecologically, we don't do any pesticides for our sites. As I said, we also prefer not to mow. We like to keep the sheep doing the grazing for us. It's also an economic benefit to the sheep grazers, and they can buy more sheep, they can graze more, and what they do with their sheep, whether it's wool, mutton, whatever, that's, that's theirs. We pay them. We also enter into local maintenance agreements with local landscapers. If we have to do clearing, if we have to do any tree maintenance, we're not gonna bring outside parties in to plant trees. We're gonna find as local as we can. And also, I mentioned this before, we use a borosilicate glass. It's a non-toxic glass. The Pyrex measuring cups in your house are the exact same type of glass. Next, please. Other community concerns that we've heard is a concern about EMF radiation, and this just kind of presents all the household items in your home that produces more EMF than your house does, I mean, than, than our facility will. And this is in your house, feet away from you versus our facility that is hundreds of feet, if not more, from you. Next, please. Continual soil health. Our panels are, almost have a shark glass-type coating that, if they are damaged, they don't shatter. They will just, the cracks will spider out, but the whole panel will not fall apart. And then, you know, EPA studies showing for the major, the majority of borosilicate panels show that the risk assessment is below the standards for EPA risk. And on top of that, they pass the T-clip test for toxicity. Anytime we do have panels that are damaged, we're contracting with local recycling. They don't go, they don't go to a regular recycling facility to be recycled. There are specialized solar panel recyclers that will disassemble the panels and recycle the materials. And that's also why we, in that respect, would like to do soil testing before we begin construction and during the lifestyle, lifecycle of the project to maintain and confirm that the soil quality is the same as when we got there versus when we leave in 35 years. And then we also provide decommissioning. We include a decommissioning bond, and if it pleases the board, we are more than happy to sign you up on that, if not put it in escrow as make you member signatory, just to make sure that our end of the project's covered and we're being good stewards and being good neighbors to Northumberland County. Next, please. We've also done property studies, and I can provide the board with these studies. I have them in an email format, that property values, there's no negligible change. People are willing to move in or move out for the most part with a solar farm in our, in your locations. Next, please. These are just a couple shots of some of our sites across the states. Next. Some of our sheep grazing activities. The sheep graze while our panels move. They don't really affect them. They don't jump on them. People do ask us why we don't use goats or cows. Cows will push panels over. Goats jump on things. Next, please. So during commercial operations, there are, is a little bit of sound, but it's very negligible. You would have to be next to the inverters to notice it. It's remotely monitored, so we can tell if there's any production issues, if the system goes offline. But we do visit our sites two to four times a year for maintenance, and that's maintenance outside of any kind of vegetative aesthetic maintenance. We have submitted EOP to Mr. Marston and updated that, and that has gone to the chiefs for their approval. And an OX box is also gonna be outfitted on the site, so they will have access in case of emergency. This is a bad slide. Please change this. You can, you can turn it off. Just a couple other notes just about our projects. We have proposed a $5,000, $5,000 donation to Virginia Cooperative Extension for 4H, $25,000 to the SHINE program for workforce development, very much wanting to get and build a local workforce for solar industry, whether it's for us or for any developers, rooftop or commercial. And then we have provided the- provided the county attorney with a siting agreement for $135,000 of paid bond approval. And that covers the majority of it. I'm happy to answer any questions or dive into any topics further.
All right. Any board members have any questions?
That was $135,000 per project?
Yes.
To be paid in full upon approval?
At miles, there's a couple milestones. It won't be the approval tonight, but it will be as we approach NTP, getting our final land development approval through planning and zoning. But it will be before construction. Should be before construction. I'd have to revisit the agreement that Mr. Gregory has.
All right. Any other questions?
I've got more, but I'll wait. Go ahead.
Welcome to ask them there if you want.
Projects are you part of in the northern neck at this point?
We have an approved site in Westmoreland County off Coppell Highway. It's a one and a half megawatt site.
That's the only one that you're part of, or will be a part of?
Yes, we, yeah, we also have our 1.5 megawatt in Lancaster. That's down off Highway 200 as well. That would be the final little bit of that substation's capacity.
You stated that you would test the soil throughout the life cycle of the project, right?
Yes.
Why would you do that if you claim that they're completely environmentally friendly? Why would you need to test throughout the cycle of the project?
Just for clarity and transparency sake. Some people have asked and shown concern, and we want to show them that our site is clean from the start to the day we leave. And if there's something wrong for whatever reason, we're here to take care of it now and not let it be a problem in 35 years.
How long has Pivot been in business?
Since 2009.
So you don't have either of the projects that's run its complete lifecycle?
Correct. There is, the lion's share of developers around the country are in that same position.
That's all I've got, ready.
Long you have anything right now?
I don't.
Mr. Bryan?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, sir.
You said the fire department's looking at any EOP?
Emergency operations.
Yes, sir. I know what it is. Well, I'm a fire chief and I haven't seen it yet.
That, it's hard to speak to. I did send it to Philip, and we did receive comments from, what, Chief Kaiser and?
It was sent to Fairfield's Fire Department.
How come I wasn't sent to carry on?
There'd be a better question for Mr. Balderson, but, but I'm assuming because it was in their district.
All part EMS here. One big group. I was right, one big group. Have a questions, Mr. Bryan?
Not now.
Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Tedlock, are we still in agreement with the Patuxent Naval Air Station about non-glare solar panels?
There was something at, at one time that they requested that, it was a, an understanding, I guess, more, more or less that we have in our comprehensive plan to have non-glare. But as far as an ordinance or anything like that, we don't have anything in our ordinance related to that.
They, they were referring to their pilots flying over Northumberland County and having some glare come into the cockpit of the airplanes and causing problems. Sir, are your panels non-glare?
Yes, we also do an FAA study submitting our location, and they will, FAA generally generates a report saying if there is or is not a glare impact and ask us for more information. That has not been completed yet, but I can get that in pretty short order.
Most of Northumberland is in a restricted fly zone for places like Patuxent Naval Air Station to use on maneuvers. And my concern was that your panels are of a non-glare substance.
Yes, they are. Reflecting sunlight is definitely what we don't want our planals to do, to absorb it. We can provide glare studies if needed, along with FAA study showing that we are not going to harm any aerial operations.
Anything else, Mr. Fisher? Mr. Marston, what are the conditions for this project? Or suggested conditions, put it, put it that way?
The suggested conditions of approved are that the conditional use permit shall expire on August 8th, 2029 if no construction has taken place in accordance with the plans for which use was granted. All required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the Department of Environmental Quality and the Virginia Department of Transportation. A payment and waiver agreement shall be agreed upon and executed between the solar facility operator and the county. At the end of the payment and waiver agreement's term, the county and solar facility owner may mutually agree to an extension of the existing agreement or to another agreement. Compliance with the payment and waiver agreement is required, and failure to make the required payments under the payment and waiver agreement will be considered a violation of the approved conditional use permit, and failure to comply may result in the county requiring the removal of the solar facility. Vegetative screening shall be established around the perimeter of the fence where the property owner's existing vegetation does not already provide a 25-foot width. The planting shall have a minimum height of four feet, and at least 75% of the planting shall be evergreen with a continuous landscaping strip and a minimum of a 25-foot width forming a continuous screen. A landscape plan shall be submitted by a professional landscape architect, and a surety bond shall be posted for the plantings for the life of the project to secure compliance with screening. The vegetative screening shall be planted within six months after receiving the conditional use permit and shall be maintained for the life of the facility. The grass inside the solar facility shall be a fire-resistant variety ground cover and shall be mowed each year in the month of May and in the month of October. The proposed 400 linear feet of guard rail shall be constructed as shown in the application along Old Glee Point Road. A surety bond for decommissioning shall be posted by all facility owners of record prior to obtaining any necessary permits for construction of the solar project in the amount of $150,109.77. The surety bonds shall be applicable to all successors, heirs, and assigns, and each property owner, heir, and assigned shall be severally and jointly liable for the full amount of this surety bond. The surety bond shall be updated and filed with the county after two years of operation based upon an estimate by a professional engineer of the county's choosing, licensed in the Commonwealth of Virginia, with the cost to revise the plan being borne by the facility owner, and with experience in preparing decommissioning estimates for localities in the Commonwealth. The new estimate shall include any increase in or decrease in costs due to current market rates on the estimated cost of decommissioning. Thereafter, the surety bond shall be updated and filed with the county every five years. Proof of adequate liability insurance shall be required, and a copy of the lease agreement shall be submitted to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of any building or zoning permits. A revised copy of the lease agreement shall be provided to the zoning administrator if any substantial changes to the lease agreement are made during the life of the project. The perimeter fence shall consist of an eight-foot-tall chain-link security fence. This project shall be limited to the fence 19 acres. Any onsite lighting provided for the operational phase of the solar facility shall be dark sky compliant, shielded away from adjacent property, properties, and positioned downward to minimize light spillage onto adjacent properties. During construction of the solar facility, any temporary construction lighting shall be positioned downward, inward, and shielded to eliminate glare from all adjacent properties. Emergency and or safety lighting shall be exempt from this construction lighting condition. The conditional use permit will be binding on the applicant or any successors or assigns of the project. Applicant or any successor or assigned shall notify the county upon any transfer or assignment of the project within 15 days of such transfer or assignment provided the county with contact information for any transferee. The applicant shall notify the county when the facility is operational and shall submit a annual report to the county on the amount of energy produced on December 31st of each month of the prior year. If the report indicates that no energy was generated during the year, then the decommissioning process will be triggered to begin. If the applicant, its successor, or the property owners fail to timely decommission the solar facilities, the county shall have the right, but not the obligation, to commence decommissioning activities and show access to the property, access to the full amount of the decommissioning bond and the rights to the solar facility's equipment and materials on the property. And non-compliance of any of these conditions, sorry, I don't have the last one printed off, but, but non-compliance of any of the the conditions shall come back before the Board of Supervisors for possible revocation. Yes, thank you, revocation. Appreciate it.
Mr. Marston, number seven, the proposed 400 linear feet of guard rail. Is that in the solar ordinance?
It, it, it is their additional safety to, to limit the 200.
No, no, no. Is it in the solar ordinance?
No, sir.
Why is it in the conditions?
Because it's part of their site plan and it limits.
Why is it in the conditions? Who authorized being put in?
It limits the 200-foot setback that is required unless a guard rail is put in.
We approve that. So it should not be in there until we approve that.
Who suggested that it be put in?
I did, because it was included in their site plan to.
It should not have been put in until the board approved. Any other questions, gentlemen?
How was the amount of the bond determined?
We will do a decommissioning study that factors in just the current cost, and we revisit that as inflation takes place. So it's not one amount now, and that's what it's going to be for the life of the project. It will, it will grow. I believe the ordinance is every two years.
Yeah.
So that's the frequency we will do it then.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
I've read it a few times.
Gentlemen, you have any other questions before I open the public hearing? All right.
Can I make one more statement, please?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to open the public hearing. We've got a few people who want to speak, and I'll allow you to come back.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Come back and answer questions. The first person on the sign-up sheet tonight is James Penny.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am Jim Penny, and I live across the river from Glee Point Road, or Glee Point on the Great Waukamaco. Little history about me. I moved here in 2016 as the local environment was pristine. Northumberland offered beautiful coastline living with rolling farms, beautiful vistas throughout the county, friendly folks, and a fair amount of attractions. The changing seasons result in beautiful roadside views with fields full of colorful crops from sunflowers to canola. For those inclined, it's a beautiful place to live, and there are those that come here to vacation recharge for when they go home. Now comes the selfish desire to ruin it with solar farms, a blight on the horizon to our beautiful county. Unfortunately, there are a few amongst us that are intent on scarring the landscape with these unsightly solar farms. Now, don't label me as one who shuns progress, but in its place, it can be good. Installation of solar farms do have benefits if done on rooftops of industrial complexes with a cost-saving dual use of the real estate. Amazon, over the past several years, has implemented installation of massive solar PV facilities on their warehouses, and after a few mishaps of rooftop fires, and as far as I know, are now fully operational. It seems that the problems were with shoddy installation of the cabling and the interconnection junctions being damaged during installation. In fact, that appears to be a significant problem causing the majority of the hotspot fires in solar PV installations. Prior to retirement, I was a department manager for an international pump company. My responsibilities include managing numerous contract administrators, overseeing production of large pumps by our factory in Germany. Timing and attention to detail was paramount, as air contracts entailed extensive liquidated damages if tardy on delivery of numerous phases of the project due to being multimillion-dollar values. As I have spent time reviewing the documentation that's submitted in the support for this project, I found a lot of discrepancies that border on mistrust, inconsistent with the need for proper attention to detail. As time progresses, there have been discoveries as to the unintended consequences for this type of project. Property loss value is one. Recent studies have shown that there is a decrease of property values in the three-to-five-mile radius of a solar facility. Early in my career, I was a licensed real estate agent, and at the time, I likened to installation of a pool at the house. Studies at the time showed that 15% of home buyers did not want one. So basically, 15% of your market to sell your house with a pool dissipated. This resulted in an extended time on the market causing another issue. If the buyer had found his new home and had time constraints by contract, hmm. I sincerely feel that solar farms will fall into the same category. As I live within the three-to-five-mile distance from the old Glee Point Road project, I sincerely object to it being built on this line of thought. And then there's the question, what are the financial and aesthetic benefits of these projects to the county? They will be in public view for all to see as they pass by. I'm sorry, I do not consider that as a benefit. Based on the documentation submitted, financially, I don't see any significant benefit to the county either. And I'm referencing the documentation that is in, on the website. Based on the documentation submitted, financially, I don't see any significant benefit to the county either. The documentation does not indicate that they are taking into consideration the current revenue from personal property taxes. The amount indicated in their documentation, $75,000 over 25 years is totally insignificant. I realize that as elected to represent the citizens of the five districts, you have a responsibility to fairly study items that come before you. There will be items that will continue Northumberland County on its support and care. Almost done. Care for the environment going forward, for the enjoyment of all, and then there will be those not so inclined. I also understand the underlying thought that is questioned within saying, who am I to tell someone what they may or may not do with their own property? Well, gentlemen, keep this in mind. You are stewards responsible for keeping the county going forward. There will be occasions when something does fit the long-term goals of the county, and then there will be those that don't. Planning is justified by developing a consensus of prudent use in what the county needs to progress. Unfortunately, I do not feel that taking up valuable and beautiful real estate for a solar farm is a prudent use and will not be in the best interest of the county. Please vote no on the approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Next person on the sign-up sheet is Edgar Dolman.
My name is Edgar Dolman. I reside at 125 Shalango Drive. And I was impressed by the presentation, and it's nice to know that there'll be sheep grazing under there. Nevertheless, as Mr. Penny pointed out, it's not a sight for sore eyes. And watching the solar farm being constructed down in Lancaster County, when I go to the Y to work out, he's quite right. It ain't going to be a sight for sore eyes. The question that comes to my mind is, is it worth it in terms of the costs and benefits? The costs that we look at, of course, are taking land from traditional use into a solar farm. And the benefits we presumably get are cleaner air and less CO2 into the atmosphere. And therefore, we're fighting climate change. At least that's the story. The reality is, is that you could double the amount of CO2 in the air that's today that's considered too high, and the maximum greenhouse, added greenhouse effect would be about small fraction of a degree. Because CO2 as a greenhouse gas has all. The chance for pollution may come from destruction of those solar farms through storms like tornadoes or hurricanes. And given the life expectancy of a solar farm, we can be guaranteed that a good handful of tornadoes will wander through Northumberland County in the next 20 years and at least two or three hurricanes like Sandy or Ernesto. If they're severely damaged that way, then there will be pollution in spite of the design improvements that was mentioned. So the benefits seem to me to be very negligible compared to the potential costs, both in terms of quality of the environment, use of the land in traditional ways. And I would ask you to sort of vote no unless it can be demonstrated that the long-term benefits to the county, the state and the nation are actually worth the costs that are going to be imposed on both the lifestyle and the invisible and the working environment here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person I have to speak is George Benjamin. George Benjamin, come on up, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen and supervisors for the opportunity, opportunity to speak. My name is George Benjamin, 389 Sawmill Cove Drive, Eastville, Virginia, 22473. I was kind of impressed with the presentation, the gentleman from Pivot. I'd never heard of Pivot. And some of you may remember my previous address to this group. I have a long history as a solar industry, supplying them with various electrical connections and panels and my employer at one time was the originator of the first solar farm in San Juan Ovisto, California, which was Atlantic Richfield, Arco, if you remember, and then later with Carlsbad, California. And I'm very curious, some things, I heard him say that they're going to use borosilicate glass and I'm really not familiar with what the composition is. Could you possibly explain what the composition is?
Uh, sir, would you ask your questions to the board?
Okay. Thank you.
The gentleman can answer that at his time.
I've just, I don't know the composition of that. I'm familiar with the monocrystal and the polycrystalline cells, but this one's a little different. So each one employs different rare earth materials. Some of these materials are hazardous to not only people but animals and stuff. So I'm interested in just what the composition is.
Now, to get an answer to your question, I want the gentleman to answer what is in that glass.
Thank you.
So you can go ahead and keep on talking. Yes, sir?
The glass matrix is obviously silica, but also mixed with boron and phosphorus, both inert material.
You'll have any gallium?
No.
No arsenide?
No.
Just phosphorus?
Correct, and boron.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And we also can submit our spec sheets for our panels to the board's consideration for their input.
Okay. Thank you. The only material I would have a question with is the phosphorus in there. If any of you are veterans, I'm sure you remember phosphorus weapons. So that's a concern to me. I'm looking at this project just like I look at the other solar projects. I live in the Northern Neck. I'm originally a Virginian. I've worked around and came back and decided to retire here because I love the way of life here and I think we live in a very special place. And I looked at the presentation about the transmission issues, about the panels and we're going to use sheep, but I'm curious as to how you would clean the panels from pollen and dust. I don't think sheep are going to do that, but how do you do that? Do you use some sort of liquid or solvent or something that cleans these or do you spray water on them automatically or how do you do that? Because all of this winds up in the ground and, you know, the sheep is a neat, neat opportunity. I agree to it, but if you've ever raised sheep, people always know you got sheep because they can smell you coming. I know from my farm days. So that kind of concerns me. The second thing is, I would be very curious to know what the corporate structure is of Pivot Energy. Is it a public company? Is it an LLC, an LLP? Is it a private corporation? I don't know Pivot Energy. So that would, that would concern me because in getting ready to come up here to this, I thought, well, I've had a lot of experience in the solar industry and you can do this too, but here's a complete list, a complete list of solar bankruptcies and business closures. You can get this off the internet and I'd be glad to leave it with you because there seems to be this enigma that goes with the solar industry. And when we talk about these panels being good for 35 years, it's interesting to me to know what is the degradation of the production in those panels? Because at some point, the degradation has got to get down where it crosses over the break-even line as far as profitability goes. What happens then? So I look at, I look at the financial situation of the companies which are involved and I'd have to go back and do some more research on Pivot as to what their structure is, who the major owners are, you know, because I've seen many of these companies will go bankrupt, but the holders don't because the first group takes a management fee and the second group says, oh, well, I need a dividend because I invested in this thing. And then when we get down to the fact that we have to dismantle this project at some time, suddenly there's no money, but the company that you originally did the contract with winds up on this list. And who's left holding the bag but the county and subsequently the taxpayers? So it's important to understand what the corporate structure is and how it's going to be operated and you're not going to be building a solar farm without getting a return on your investment. And how does that investment work? Because part of it's going to go to the investor group and the shareholders. So that would concern me. Some things I think would be worth looking at. The automatic cleaning things, I don't know. I didn't hear a reference whether there will be automatic cleaning solution or systems on there as I mentioned about pollen and dust. And if you live here, you know what the pollen situation is here every spring. The sheep are an interesting option to the herbicide, but there's also, as I mentioned, an odoriferous issue there. And the thing that bothers me about this is, one of the nice things that we have here in this county is the fact that we have so much greenery. And if you've been through biology in high school and you learned about photosynthesis, you learn that trees take in carbon dioxide and return generate pure oxygen. And if you travel around the metropolitan areas and around the east coast, the United States and the west coast, a couple of things you'll notice is the air isn't as clear as it is in Montana and Wyoming. And part of that is due to photosynthesis. So the more we take away the opportunity for the greenery to generate oxygen, it kind of gets to the quality of life of the residents. So that would be a concern for me.
Mr. Benjamin, your time is up, sir.
Okay. Do I get a second shot?
Not, not unless you want to speak on the next one.
I can do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You certainly can. I'm sorry. All right. I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Yeah, you're okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Chloe Hodges and I'm here today on behalf of Energy Right. I think that my colleagues may have engaged here about a year or so ago, Blake and Skylar. So I'm here today on behalf of them. I tend to cover more of the middle peninsula, Northern Neck now in my new position, given that I'm from Urbana. So this area of the state is, is of value to me and important to me. So glad to be here today and to have driven across the Appahannock. I first wanted to just kind of tell a little bit about Energy Right. If you're not aware, we are a nonprofit organization and we help localities across the state navigate the clean energy landscape as it's changing in rural conservative communities and we do that from a rural conservative perspective. We support all of the above energy strategy and our main goal is to make sure that energy's done the right way. That's why we're called Energy Right. We want to make sure that solar and other types of facilities are good neighbors and that we're implementing these projects thoughtfully. So that's really our main goal. I wanted to touch on a few things. I'm going to try to address some of the things that were touched on that I heard throughout the discussion as well. But I think what's most important to remember is that it's really important to recognize property rights when we're having this conversation. 91% of Virginians, we ran a public opinion poll at the beginning of the year and 91% believe that landowners should have the right to do what they wish with their property when it comes to solar. What's important here is making sure that we're mitigating all of the negative impacts. So making sure that we're incorporating buffers, which has been done, making sure that we're using creative land uses like agro-voltaics, making sure that we're accounting for erosion, making sure that we have good decommissioning plans. Those are the things that are important, but beyond that, we think it's most important to recognize that landowners should have the ability to do what they wish with their property if that's what they feel is best for them and their family. I also wanted to mention, I know that there was some conversation about if, if this is profitable and kind of why this is good for locality. I think it's really important to make sure that we have energy that's made in the United States, in Virginia, made locally. And as was mentioned, this energy will directly power the homes right here in Northumberland County. I also heard some conversation about kind of the benefits and burdens of solar energy and I think that's a really important conversation to have. Every type of land use, as I'm sure you all are aware, has its benefits and burdens and it's important that we're mitigating for those burdens, but we're recognizing the benefits as well. So I wanted to highlight, I kind of discussed some of the burdens that have been mitigated, but I wanted to highlight some of the benefits. The first I've already mentioned, which is of course locally sourced energy, but also the tax revenue that's going to be coming into the county and the different programs that will be funded, which I know some were mentioned here tonight. I wanted to, to make mention of that and how impactful that is and how important that could be for the county. And I also wanted to mention that the state has been doing lots of work to make sure that we're mitigating against some of the concerns here tonight. I know that there's some bills in place that will kind of come to fruition at the end of the year that will offset some of the concerns about taking up agricultural land as well as, as well as forested land. So that I can provide more information about how that's kind of progressing as we learn more. DEQ should be releasing some more information on that here by the end of the year. But I wanted to touch on a few of those things and I also wanted to say, solar is cheap and affordable and that's, it's not just about clean energy, it's also about putting electrons on the grid. There was a study, Lazard releases a study every year, and solar and wind were considered to be the most affordable way to put, to put energy on the grid based on their study. It's an upfront cost, but that energy, you know, and like gas, you don't have to turn it on and off. Once the, the panels are built, they do produce energy. And the metric that we use is they lose about half a percent of their efficiency every year. So at around 35 years, that would be, I guess, around 90%. So you can actually still use the panels for other uses. They're just typically not usable for, for utility scale because they're not as effective. But I wanted to point some of those things out. Again, my name's Chloe Hodges. I'm happy to engage with all of you and share more information and I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, of course.
Ask a question, Mr. Haney? Mr. Haney?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question.
Of course.
I didn't think solar panels were any near, anywhere near 100% effective when they were installed.
I'm not sure what, I'm pretty sure, well, their effectiveness, I guess, is based on what they were putting...
Were you throwing out a number of 90% effective at the end?
Around that. So our metric that we use is based on how effective they are when they're, their, their full effectiveness when they're put into, to use. They, they go down about half a percent every year. So that is our general metric. So I, you could do the calculations. I've done them before. I, you could probably do it on your phone, but I think that's around somewhere between 80 and 90%, depending on the life cycle of the project. If it goes, if 100% is when it starts and then every year it goes down half a percent. So because the panels are still usable at the end of their life, they can be recycled, but oftentimes they could be used for non-industrial purposes because they do still produce energy. They just don't produce it at the rate in order for a, a company to be willing to put on the grid at that point. Something else would be more effective.
Are you employed by the nonprofit Energy Right?
Yes, yes, sir.
How is Energy, Energy, Energy Right funded?
So we're, we're funded by a variety of ways, some philanthropic. We have some grant funding as well as...
Philanthropies?
I, I don't know every single one. I, I'm not, I'm not the CEO. Yeah, I, I mean, I could get with my, my...
Why?
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of it.
Why are you here today? Who asked you to come here today?
Well, this is a, a part of my job is to engage with localities across the entire state. I've, we've engaged with about 65 localities across the state of Virginia and the organization was created to help Virginians and localities pass these projects.
So you would say your job is to go to localities and sell solar?
I, I don't sell solar. We do not sell solar.
Promote solar.
Well, what we also do, we don't only help in these types of situations, we've also helped localities craft ordinances and make sure that we're putting policies in place to also protect localities. So I, I wouldn't say that we're just blindly promoting solar. We want to make sure that it's done the right way and that's why my, my colleagues Blake and Skylar created Energy Right. They saw a need for this and to really make sure that we're doing it from a conservative perspective in rural localities with people that understand rural localities and to help navigate it. So I'm, we're never going to say, tell you how to vote. That's not my goal. Our goal is to educate and to help localities make sure that they're have, they're making the most informed decision. So that's what I would say. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight?
This, this one's for both, whatever. I think the answer to the question is, is if there's efficiency X, after 35 years, it's actually going to be 17 and a half percent less. So it'll be 82 and a half percent of what it is. But the entire point, as Edgar was pointing out, is that the whole push for solar is based on a hoax. I'm still waiting for the ice age that was supposed to start back in the 1970s and it's been 40 years that they've been declaring that we're going to go up 10 degrees in 10 years and everybody's going to die. But I observed that Plymouth Rock is still where it was a couple hundred years ago. It's not underwater yet. In fact, last year, we had the greatest growth of the ice caps on both poles in recorded history. That being said, it's not my piece of property and I do believe in property rights bigly. I enjoy property rights. It's not an easy decision. The push is coming. Whether it's based in fact as a push or not, it is coming. It's going to be kind of hard to avoid, but if it's a mistake, it's Mr. Jett's mistake to make. As long as, you know, the notion that it's nice that it's, they're using sheep to keep the, the grounds away from the, the equipment, that's nice and hopefully the trees will make people happy. We don't know because the trees haven't been put anywhere on any solar farm in this county yet. So we don't really know how that fits. It's a tough call. The property rights should be paramount. Even if I don't like what he's doing, it's not my, my call. I don't really have any good advice. I'm a little bit concerned that the LLC may be buried like the old Polish doll. You take several layers off. Their, their website doesn't seem to provide a lot of information on that. So please do a little bit more digging on who's going to be here in 35 years. Their, their website doesn't seem to provide a lot of information on that. So please do a little bit more digging on who's going to be here in thirty-five years to decommission the thing, because I don't think the gentleman that was here is going to still be working with Pivot in thirty-five years, and I doubt seriously that the life expectancy of Pivot is going to be an additional thirty-five years. And in fact, with all of the technology that's coming onboard, y'all have heard that technology doubles every eighteen months, and it's true, it does. There's a company down there in South Carolina that's working on a power system that will power an entire house the size of your washing machine, and you can disconnect from the grid if you can get it to where it's affordable for the average homeowner to buy it. So there's a lot of new technology that's coming onboard, and we're going to jump on something, and by the time it goes in, it's already going to be outdated. It's going to be outdated, and the new thing is going to come onboard, and we're going to be scratching our heads going, maybe we should have waited. I guess what my recommendation would be is, rather than giving approval or denial for that matter, what we really need is a moratorium. This county's not really ready to go there, and we can't really say no, and we can't really say yes. And as things are changing, by the way, I, I think there's a number of donors that support this young lady back here that you'd all be nice to know. Anyhow, I think we need to wait just a little bit because there's new technology coming online, and just in a couple short years, it'll be better, it'll be, I don't want to say cleaner, because it's not really that a dirty technology anyways. It's a tough call, but if there is a weight on the, on the plate that should weigh it one way or the other, it's his property. That's all I can say.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? I'll let you come back in just a minute. Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anywhere, anyone that's online tonight, or anyone that's in the virtual world like to speak on this solar project tonight?
Yes, sir. My name's Katie Powers.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi. We live down the road on Blackwell's Wharf, and so we're directly downhill from this proposed site. Like the gentleman who just spoke, I'm a very, I'm an advocate for property rights and doing what you want within your property. For me, it's if it doesn't impact your neighbors. So like the gentleman was just stating, we, you know, this technology is, you know, probably going to be defunct in eighteen months. We don't know what's going to occur. We get very strange weather here. We've had a microburst on our property, small tornado that took down eight trees. These type of things really concern me, living directly downhill from this property. The other gentleman who was speaking about how are they going to clean the solar panels with the pollen and whatnot? Where are they going to get a water source from? Are, are they going to drill in a deep well and have to then, what if there's a fire? The fire department comes, pulls the water out of that well, which is going to drain our wells, and pull saltwater into our wells? So there's a lot of unknowns here, and I believe also that, if I remember correctly when I read this a couple of weeks ago, there's a five ac, a five acre tract of woods that has to be cleared? I believe that's correct. So what about the impact to the wildlife? What are we going to do? So we're going to have logging trucks? We're going to have work trucks on our small residential street? We are a neighborhood down here on, off Oglee Point. The, the tourism that comes down this road to go to Horn Harbor Restaurant, which supports this county, is going to have to drive by this with a four-hundred-foot guardrail in our neighborhood? I walk these streets with my dogs every day. You know, we moved out here and bought a, a part-time property twenty-five years ago, and we've bought a full-time property where we live now ten years ago. Mr. Penny is pretty much my neighbor, right across the, the river, I believe, from us. We moved out here, we left Richmond because of the absolute beauty of this county, the, the farms. It's where agriculture meets the bay, and people come out here to get away from the cities and love this beautiful, the fields and the sunflowers and the canola and the, and the corn and all of this. And I was looking up this proposed site here on our road, and looking at the comprehensive plan from two thousand sixteen, his property is actually noted in that record as prime agricultural soil. So we really want to get rid of this acreage for farming? I mean, granted, I understand it's his right. You know, he could go in there and subdivide it and put in seven houses, but you know what? I know what is in a house, right? I don't know what's a solar farm. There's families here, there's a family right across the street, the Mitchells, who tried for years to have a child. I'm sorry, this, this impact to our community, we really need to look at it before a decision is made. And I'm telling you, if this goes through, we're selling and we're leaving and we're finding a different county that holds its standards, right? I, I can't, I cannot drive by this and look at this in our neighborhood every day. Solar farms, whatever they're worth, put them out on a major highway, along a highway where there's no impact. They don't belong in our neighborhoods. They don't belong near homes. The sheep, I know, I love an animal, but you know, come on, there, there's families right next door. It's zoned agricultural, so if he wants to put a farm there, go for it. But solar, the county's not ready for it. We can't even address the trash, seriously. We can't even address the trash situation or the drainage in Wycomico Church, and we're looking at a solar farm, two of them, in Northumberland. I, I just, I am so opposed to this, and I am sorry, Mr. Jett. You know, I really hope that something happens for you. Last time that you tried this, I told you that I would happily buy your acreage, and you told me no, so I'm making that offer again, and I hope you got to-
You're a liar.
Yep, thank you, sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Powers, your time is up. All right. Anyone else that's online tonight would like to speak? Anyone else that's online tonight, would they like to speak on this solar project?
Yes.
Yes? Would you state your name and address, ma'am?
Yes. Amanda Rogers in Reedville. I have a question. Beyond the training of local fire and EMTs, is there an onsite fire suppression plan?
Is there an onsite suppression, fire suppression plan?
Probably could have answered that if I'd seen the emergency operations plan, but I-
I don't know. To my knowledge, I do not know. Would you like to answer that question, sir?
The emergency operations plan does account for thermal incidents, and there is an order of operations that the EMS would go through. The site would be shut down, knockbox they would have access to, but there is no fire suppression system onsite.
So would-
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So would water and other supplies have to be brought in and the county resources being used?
Fire trucks would have to, yes, they have water trucks or applicable fire hydrants if available.
So that would be a county resource?
Yes, that would be a county resource.
That's something that should be considered from the county's perspective? Being the taxpayers' perspective?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, too. All right. Anyone else in the, that's online tonight would like to speak on this solar project? Anyone else that's online tonight like to speak on the solar project? All right. Since we don't have anyone else who wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll let you come back and make comments. And the board can ask you some more questions.
That's what I'm here for.
So just to, took some notes during the public comment. Just going down my list, apologize for being out of order from how they were written. The one is talking about housing developments being built. The nice thing about our facilities is while we do have a thirty-five-year lease that seems pretty permanent, if there was any reason to remove the site, those are just stakes in the ground, they're not concreted in by any means. It's steel beams, they can be pulled out, and the land can go right back to production. We're not scraping any topsoil off-site. The land that's there now is going to be there right now in the same soil composition. There's minimal digging, just some, some trenching for underground cable. You know, once you put a housing development in, they're generally not seeing too many housing developments getting bulldozed and all the associated infrastructure that goes with that. And to that, our facilities bring, contribute revenue to the county, whereas a housing development does contribute revenue as people buy homes and live there, but they also create a draw on emergency services, police, EMS, due to the folks living there, and also puts a burden on schools. Not that children are a burden, but it's just more bodies, and then you have to account for that. Another is, our sites are typically up and running in twelve to eighteen months past approval. In terms of technology aging out, we are always looking at newer solar technology from our inverters to improve, to improve efficiency and to echo off cloak, it is a point five percent degradation per year. But we also recycle panels as they approach the end of their life cycle, and some are recycled at a facility, but others are freely given away to nonprofits and reused. While they are not avail, not usable for commercial production, they still have a use and a life. Terms of stormwater and groundwater, with the new DEQ regulations, our intent is to maintain that no stormwater should be leaving the site. It will hit our panels and stay onsite. And that will require detention basins of sufficient size, and if there's any questions on that aspect, my attorney, my engineer's here. And to your comments, sir, about cleaning solutions, we generally do not go through and spray our panels down. We do visit our sites, and if it's noted, that's something we could consider, but that's generally not a practice that Pivot employs. Pivot being a fairly green company, we see that as a wasteful use of water, and if it were to happen, we would truck that water in, we would not be putting any wells or any kind of permanent utility infrastructure in for the drawing of water. Even for sheep grazing, that water is brought in by the grazer at their expense. In terms of our corporate structure, Pivot is an LLC overarching. We're owned by a primary investor group called Energy Capital Partners, ECP. They own a number of energy ventures, some solar, some conventional energy production. They are our primary funder for our projects and allow us to develop at the rate we do. And as Pivot, we're a little bit different than a lot of solar developers. Pivot Energy is the owner, the operator. They will be at the site as its owner, will be the people sending you the production report every year. That will all be Pivot Energy. It's not going to be a third-party solar company. It's not going to be a facility we build and sell to somebody else. It's ours, and that's what we pride ourselves on, is being the long-term owner and neighbor. If there's ever an issue, it'll be a Pivot person you talk to about it. And I think that's it. I appreciate the extra time.
All right. Any other questions from the board members here?
What is your wind rating on your panels?
I would have to double-check the spec sheet. I don't have that off the top of my head, sorry.
And we talked about panels, but we, we haven't said a whole lot about inverters. What type of invert? Is it any type of lithium-ion batteries?
No, there are no lithium-ion batteries, and to that extent, there are no plans, no storage at all. Our systems, when it comes to sourcing our materials, it's, we use, we're almost fifty percent domestic content at this point with our production and our procurement systems.
How many of these, Powers, did you say you had in the local counties, Lexington County?
Lancaster is in development, so the panel count isn't final yet, but between these two facilities, it's, I believe, eight thousand at Folly Road and about nine thousand at Old Glee. Depending on the spacing of the panel rows has an impact on shading, and so some facilities, while the same size production, the target is being thirty megawatts, the spacing requires more panels to get to that production level. So not every site has the same amount of panels, even though it generates the same amount of electricity.
And your panels, are they single stacked or double stacked?
Single.
Single. Okay. They will not exceed ten feet in height?
They will not.
Okay. Now, you, the, we propose four hundred linear feet of guardrail. We have setback from the highway, I think it's what, two hundred feet? I know you want to get extra panels in. And I know that's the reason for the guardrail. That is not in our ordinance.
We can look at it and see what we can pull back and see what adjustments we can make. Willing to look into that. There is some room that we can shift panels.
So your panels are non-glare, because that's one big thing that we must, must not have, is panels that create a glare.
Mm-hmm, and I can, if it pleases you, we can do a glare study and confirm that, and also confirm with the FAA that it will not provide a glare impact.
And has your EMS plan, your emergency management plan, been signed off by our county EMS person?
I provided Mr. Morrison comments on July thirtieth, so I'm not sure.
Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Balderson has, has that second review in his hands.
I can't hear you.
Mr. Balderson has that second review in his hands. They were-
But he has not signed off.
Very minor changes, but I have not heard back from him.
Okay. How much tax revenue are you suggesting that this county may receive from this?
Over the lifespan, it could be probably in the two hundred to three hundred thousand over the lifespan of the project. I'd have to dig back into my economic study on it.
Two, two, three hundred thousand over-
Thirty years?
Thirty years is nickels and dimes.
I already broke that down. Same as two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, over thirty-five years lifecycle, that comes to seven thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents per year. If you multiply fifty-two weeks a year by the thirty-five years, that's eighteen hundred and twenty weeks. Divide that into two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we get a hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents a week.
I can retire on that.
You can.
Yeah.
What do you call that amount- What do you call that amount of money that you, that you offer to counties? What is that, what is that payment?
Are you talking about the siting agreement?
The $200,000 to $300,000 that the county would receive, why do you offer that to the county, what is it, what is it called?
Oh, that would just be tax revenue from it being, the site being approved. If you were talking about the siting agreement that we sent to Mr. Gregory, that is just part, as part of your ordinance, we're asked to enter negotiations for a siting agreement.
Over 35 years is pretty in consequence.
It is, doesn't mean it's not even a drop in the bucket. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I see on here you say it has no parking on the property, gotta have parking, I mean, trucks are gonna come in and service the sheep, bring in the waters, trucks are gonna come in and service the panels.
There's gonna, there, inside of the gate, there is a small gravel lane where that parking will be.
So there is in fact parking?
I guess you could call it that, I mean, it's just, it's just an access road that you would just stop on.
You gotta be able to get in there.
Yes, it would just, it's an access road, gated access road.
I don't know why they put on here, will there be parking on the property? It simply should be yes, instead of a no, my way of thinking. Very minor thing, but I don't know why they put no down there, it's gonna have, gonna have to have access.
And the sheep on the property, they will be maintained and taken care of by a contract to a separate person?
Yes, that's who we contract with, we don't own them, we contract with them, and it's, they're sheep, so they're obligated to take care of them and keep them healthy.
How often will they be around? How often will these people be around?
At least once to twice a week. Sheep consume a lot of water, so making sure they have a fresh water supply is essential. And with at least a 14-acre site, you're looking at about anywhere from three to five sheep an acre, so you're talking six or so sheep.
And as farm animals go, they die sometimes, don't they?
Yeah, that's true.
Somebody has to be there to clean them up and get the carcass out of there and not have a unsightly thing for the people who go up and down the highway and live nearby. That's why I ask, how often is somebody gonna be there?
Fisherman, buddy, in just one second.
Yes, sir.
What kind of access does the sheep owner have to the solar facility?
It'll be the same gate that, it's the same common access for everything.
Common access?
Yes. Yeah, we're not gonna do separate accesses. So it's gonna be one gate for everybody.
All right, dangers of that person going in around those panels?
Aside from opening, but all the, all the boxes should be locked, other than pulling wires out and being a vandal, that's where the inherent danger would be. It would, if he's going to cause problems, then they definitely will find problems. But if you're going there to maintain your sheep, yeah.
I mean, besides that, besides vandalism?
Okay, no, there should be no issue. Just one more addition to that comment, I'm sorry. As part of the agreement we enter with Dominion or a co-op in any electrical provider, transmission provider, the array does have a thing called a recloser, and that device cuts off the electricity during a storm, not a storm, during a power outage, so utilities can work on their lines. Because as we already discussed, solar panels produce power non-stop, as long as there's light, they're working. So that isolates the system, so Dominion or Northern Neck Co-op can safely work on their equipment.
All right, where does the power go that's being produced when that device is active?
It just stays within the system, it doesn't off-gas or...
But don't you have a excess of buildup in the system? Is the system adequate to carry a excess amount of electricity, or what?
It, I'm sorry, I'm not an electrical engineer to that level.
When you keep generating electricity, it has to go somewhere. You can't just sit here and store it in nothing, you have nowhere to store it. But it has to be some way to store it, or you have to be able to completely shut the panel down.
The panels are completely shut down, that's...
But you said all it took was a flashlight for the panel to generate electricity.
Until the recloser is tripped. Once that's tripped, everything is dead, and that is Dominion...
But the panel is still generating electricity because it has a connector that comes from the panel that connects it to the rest of the system. So the panel is separate, you could take that panel, set it on this table right here, and it will generate electricity, not being connected to anything.
Correct.
All right, so how can you shut the panel down?
The panel itself cannot be shut down, the transmission to the grid can be isolated.
All right, but where does the rest of the electricity go?
I'd have to consult my electrical engineers, it's, there's a better answer than what I have.
It's still producing the exact same amount of electricity it would do with the same amount of sunlight if it was, if the circuit was open, as it is being closed. That energy has to be going somewhere, is it going to ground, or what?
Likely, because all our systems are grounded.
I think you ought to have that answer, if you're in the solar business.
Well, I can definitely get it for you in short order.
Yeah, I would know everything in the world about those panels. I'm not a solar guy, but I know quite a bit about a solar panel. Gentlemen, any other questions?
I've got a question for staff.
Go ahead, anytime you want.
I think her name was Ms. Powers, she chimed in online. She spoke of the comprehensive plan in Northumberland County. How does, how do these projects fit in the comprehensive plan, or do they, or what does the comprehensive plan say?
Either one of us, it doesn't directly address solar, per se. I know that the Planning Commission is currently reviewing the comprehensive plan, that is one thing that they are looking at. One thing that the board could have, or could do, is have the Planning Commission review the application. And actually, I believe legal counsel would agree that if you are considering this, to send it back to the Planning Commission for their review, in its conformity to the comprehensive plan. Some of the things that you would look at would be prime agricultural farmland, some of the things you would look at is it impacting any type of growth area that we've designated in our comprehensive plan. So those are the types of things that they would look at, per se, given in the comprehensive plan.
So you said the county attorney recommends we send it back to the Planning Commission in the event that we were considering approving the application?
Correct.
Comprehensive plan is a guide, it's not a rulebook, it is strictly a guide to go by. I don't recall solar power, per se, being introduced.
Somebody else say something, I thought I caught something. All right, any other questions, comments from the board?
Guess I got all my questions answered.
I say let's, let the Planning Commission and our attorney review this. That's my, that's my...
Mr. Hasty. Do you have any advice for us tonight, or no advice?
Mr. Chair, I would say that I agree with the county administrator, that in my opinion, Section 15.2-2232 of the Virginia Code does require that the Planning Commission review and approve this solar project as substantially in accord with the comp plan prior to the project being constructed or authorized. So I think that's something that the majority of the board want to do, they certainly can defer action tonight and send it to the Planning Commission for their review under 15.2-2232. But it's up to the pleasure of the board how you wish to proceed, but I do concur with that review necessity.
I agree.
That's if we were considering approving the project.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that would be before you would authorize this, I think that review and approval should be made, yes. But it's up to the pleasure of the board of how you want to take a motion tonight.
The board have any comments or any other questions that we may want to discuss? Or what is the board's decision?
I, I'd like to make a motion that we let the Planning Commission go over this and let our attorney go before we make a decision on the next step.
So your motion is to send it to the Planning Commission for review?
Right.
All right. Do you have a second? Second is not needed. All right, since we have no second, is there any other discussion on this?
You're talking about both parcels, correct?
No, only one.
Only one parcel?
Only voting on one parcel right there. The one right there behind Bobby Jones's. All right, any discussion, gentlemen? There's no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, like sign.
Aye.
Motion does not pass. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure, the board? Gentlemen, I'll make a motion, and this motion's made in due consideration of the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices, and in the pursuant to the body's statutory authority, that we do not approve this project because of the loss of prime farmland. I don't feel personally that it meets the ordinance, and I just don't think it's good for the general welfare and the being of the citizens of that community.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, like sign. All right, sorry, your motion does not, I mean, the motion passes, your project is not approved. Sorry, sir. All right, let's move on to our second public hearing. Philip, let you take over again, sir.
Yes, sir. We have a request by Steven W. Jett, owner and 200 Folly LLC applicant, for a conditional use permit to allow a utility-scale solar energy facility on properties owned A1 agriculture. Property is shown as tax map parcel 27-1-304 and 304A, and is located on Northumberland Highway in Burgess.
All right, well, we'll start back over. If you'd like to comment again. We got a different hearing than now.
My only comment is, I do have an answer to your question from the prior one, so we can pay that one forward, so...
Just describe this project a little bit, I know it's different from the other one.
This one is located again at Northumberland and Folly. It does meet the setbacks with, there is also an additional guard rail at, for safety off Folly Road, it's another 3-megawatt project. And it's just...
Yes, sir. All right. Board comments? Questions?
Covered everything on this one earlier.
What was that, Mr. Brown?
Already covered everything.
Yeah, he's covered it all in his, in his last comments, and he did a wonderful job on it, and I'll give you credit on that, you did. Yeah. All right, no comments before I open the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing. First person on the sign-up sheet is Mr. James Penny.
Jim Penny, and I live on River Hill Road across from Gleeb Point. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Regarding the Folly Road application, 24 Cup 004, I've been reviewing the documents as presented by the applicants of this project as currently before you. Frankly, gentlemen, I have reviewed the 240 pages, and I'm appalled at the internal discrepancies within the documentation presented, and sincerely wonder how this can be approved. I will enlighten. On the conditional use permit form under item 3, the question is, have you previously applied to or obtained a permit from Northumberland County for any portion of this request or relating to this request? Please note on that form, the box "no" is marked. History, at the March 29, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting, there were two public hearings held on applications, 23 Cup 002, 23 Cup 003. Both were for this very same series of products, and both were unanimously denied. I believe the correct answer should have been yes, with details as requested. Item 5, I find it curious that the signature for the president of Pivot Energy is dated September 23 of 2022, we're in '24, which predated the previous applications. Personally, I feel on these two issues alone, the conditional use permit should be denied. Additionally, on the current cup applications, Appendix B, the height of the structure stated is 10 feet. And Mr. Haney, I believe you asked this question just a few moments ago. Again, from the project design in the data, at full tilt, is quote, "At full tilt, the maximum height of any panel will be under 15 feet." Which is it? 10 or 15? It does make a difference to the neighbors and passersby. After numerous hours in scoring the drawings, there appears to be absolutely nothing regarding how many panels vertically, or what the actual height will be. Our emergency first responders, I think, should know. But there's more. Numerous documents within the packages are two years old. Even a key one, which happens to be the last three pages of the 241-page PDF, the decommissioning detail letter and spreadsheet. In addition to being an absolute violation of per-county ordinance, S145-55 subsection 19 decommissioning plan, section E bonding, I'm quoting, solar energy... I'm quoting, "Solar energy facility utility scale shall require a charity bond in the amount required for full decommission of the solar facility as stated in the decommissioning plan." Key sentence coming, "Salvage value of the solar energy equipment decommissioned is not to be included as part of the charity bond, as the bond itself should cover the full cost of decommissioning." The paragraph continues, "This paragraph was amended to the ordinances on September fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. To be fair to Pivot Energy, this was revised per the amended date versus the use of two-year-old documents by the applicant." To add insult to injury, the base, the date of the accompanying letter is dated August twenty-fifth twenty twenty-two. That's the cover sheet for the decommissioning package. Additionally, oh, by the way, they use in twenty twenty-two values for all the calculations within the documentation. I think there's been a little inflation since then. Within the opening section, within project design, there are two discrepancies. First is they state in the opening paragraphs approximately seven thousand seven hundred and seventy solar PV panels, when the actual number from the decommissioning schedule and the emergent emergency response plan is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. That's a substantial difference. On this section, removal, the value stated is not concurrent to any other amount within the two hundred and forty-page document. The, I believe, the um project description shows one value, and the decommissioning plan shows another. Then we come to increased county revenue. I was amused to see that Northumberland County wasn't even mentioned. References to couple highway project in Isla Wright County lost me in that section. I'm sorry. My point here is I have touched on the discrepancies that my review of the documents has located. Aside from a complete replication of a large section within the Folly Road project, I would not, as a contracts administrator, begin to even start this project without a large-scale meeting with their own sales department, the company I used to work for. Gentlemen of the board, I respectfully request that this project be denied, as I could not use this shoddy presentation to convince me to back it. Thank you for the time to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Penney. Mr. George Benjamin, you got your second chance now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to repeat everything else I said, because I still had more, but I'm looking at the fact that these panels create reflective heat. It's just like touching the roof of a car. And even in the wintertime, you'll find it's warmer than the ambient air. And NOAA had put out a study, and I'm sure you're familiar with NOAA, the national organization.
Very familiar. And I'm also familiar with the study you're talking about.
Yeah? Yep. So the heat goes up, and it disrupts your weather patterns. And when it disrupts your weather patterns, you have potential for no rain, more rain, the increase of tornadoes, because you've got these reflective panels of hot and ambient air going up. So I would question about, do we really want to do that? The last, probably the last and most important thing is thirty-five years is an awful long time. And I don't know, as I said earlier, when these panels are going to degenerate in their ability to keep up enough power to make them economically feasible. I question whether it'll go thirty-five years. But my real concern is, when this is done, somebody's going to have to dismantle this. And before we go forward with this thing, I think a bond should be put up with an escalation clause on an annual basis to pay for the restoration of the land when it and the removal of the solar farm when it's all over. And this bond should be under the custody of the county treasurer, so that we know we've got access to it, it's funded, and it will have an escalation clause, which will take it up for the year. So I'm going to be short this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, but anyone else like to speak? I would like to. Yeah, come on up.
I'm Stephen Jett. You are my representatives. Your job is to represent me against tyrannical government control over my rights. You have failed miserably. You're a bunch of tyrants. You have failed your job. Your job is to represent me, protect me from overreach of government. You, government, you're wrong. And yet, you're snickering about, oh, you only go to get a hundred and eighty-four dollars a month. Well, let me tell you something. My total income, passive income, is a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a week. And you're complaining that you're only going to get a hundred and eighty-four. You're a bunch of, hmm, you're, you have no right.
Mr. Jett, I would suggest that you lower your tone of.
Oh, oh, yeah, right. Yeah, right. Oh, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Jett.
Forgive me. Forgive me. My rights don't matter.
Your rights do matter.
Yeah, you're you're cutting me off. You're cutting me off. So my right, do I have a right to speak?
You have a right to speak.
May I speak? All right?
Gentlemen?
Forget it. Thank you.
Take him out.
No problem. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Please, sir. Thank you, please, sir. No one else, would anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone that's online tonight like to speak? Would anyone else that's online tonight like to speak about this solar project on Folly Road? No one wants to speak? All right, since no one wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the matters before the board.
Ready to make a motion, if you're ready.
Waiting for a motion.
This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices, and in pursuant to the body's statutory statutory authority. And my motion is to not approve this mo- this application.
I have a second. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, white sign. All right, motion passes, project is not approved. All right, our next public hearing, and that will be Mr. Tadlock.
Yes, our next public hearing is to consider an amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. This budget amendment is to move funds from fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-four for the payment of the middle high school debt service payment, which will reduce the fiscal year twenty-five budget by one million seven hundred four thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cent, and increase the fiscal year twenty-four budget by one million seven hundred four thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cent. Um this debt service payment invoice from U.S. Bank was received early or late in the fiscal year, May twenty-fourth. Um the U.S. Bank invoice was processed in fiscal year twenty-four and not fiscal year twenty-five. So that is why we're asking that the monies be, it was budgeted for in fiscal year twenty-five, um but was paid in fiscal year twenty-four, so that's why we're asking those monies to be moved back. Uh we did have this discussion with the county auditor, and that is what they are recommending.
All right, board have any comments before the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to note, I just want to note going in saying that if anything like this happens again, this board needs to know about it right up front.
You you were notified.
Because this has caused a lot of confusion.
Yeah, no, the the board was notified.
All right, any other comments before the public hearing? All right, open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone like to speak?
This will be short. This will be short. That one point seven million dollars is the number I was talking about the last time I spoke about the budget that the school had gone up, and now the twenty-five budget is coming down, one point seven million dollars, and it was blamed on LCI. I'm just saying, Ms. Booth came up after I spoke and said that that was blamed on LCI. That's the one point seven million dollars that twenty-five would have been a bump up to the general fund. And there it is, right there, it's coming back. That's all I have to point out.
Thank you.
So that that there should have been a little bit more foresight into what's going on there, because I shouldn't have to speak about it three months ago, and then come back here and go, oh, look, there it is again, one point seven million dollars. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Sheriff Beech, you've been off quiet tonight.
I do not want to speak.
All right, anyone in the virtual world, or that's online tonight, like to speak on this budget amendment? Anyone that's online like to speak about this budget amendment? I'll close the public hearing, the matters before the board.
I move to move the funds from fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-four for the payment of the middle high school debt service payment. Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Just moving of the money, we'll clarify everything and get everything back like it should be. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, all right, motion passes. Mr. Tadlock? That's all our public hearings. Only thing we have left on our agenda tonight is a mo- is to go into closed meeting. And y'all are welcome to stay after we get out. But if you do not want to stay, I thank everyone for coming. I thank everyone for their comments.
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, and section two point two thirty-seven eleven A three for the discussion or consideration of potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the potential disposition of publicly held real property, where a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, and assistant county administrators that are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, section two point two thirty-seven twelve F.
Do we go to closed meeting?
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Got a second? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Haney?
Aye.
All right, what action do you want, Mr. Tadlock?
Uh only action I would need is reference to the Circuit Court master deputy certification, which would be effective retroactively August first um in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cent, and that does include the increase along with the benefits to twenty-one oh six dash one thousand one, two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand seven, and two thousand six to those line items.
Grant Hill requests. All right, got a motion to approve. All right, I have a second.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, all right, motion passes. Anything else you need?
Unless the board has anything.
Board got any other comments?
One, one, something real quick, and I know Morgan wants to get out of here. Bonnie Deal, you want to take it?
Go for it.
Sent out in the email in regards to the um.
Northampton.
Northampton issue, and it stated something about the school supporting Northampton and how we supported them, but yet they want to kind of throw a bedingle into the Manhattan fisheries. Marshall, could you share that email with Holly and get her opinion on on how she would feel to support his request?
All right, sure.
And I'd like for you to also get in contact with with Lancaster County. Um there are seventy-some full-time employees from Lancaster County down at Omega Protein also, so they they're in the same boat that we are, I feel like.
I have provided or sent, forwarded the email to Mr. Gill, the county administrator in Lancaster. Um and he just, let me, he told me to let him know what this board may do. Um and he's, I guess, standing by, waiting.
I talked with Teresa Rock today, the athletic director, and Northham- Northampton County needs us a lot more than we need them when it comes to athletics. They're the only single A school on the eastern shore. There there are three schools, they're the only single A. They need to play single A competition like Northumberland, so. I think it's a good way to retaliate against what they're trying to do to Omega Protein, and that is run them out of Chesapeake Bay.
Yeah.
Because you got to understand that the county line, just like Akamak County line, the county line for Akamak County comes almost to shore on the western side of Northumberland County. You can go offshore less than two miles off Chesapeake Beach, and you're in Akamak County. And Northampton is almost the same way. They they have most of the bay. I would, I'd be willing to say Northampton probably would have a certainly, probably about two-thirds of the bay, it's in their waters. That's a big chunk.
Yep, that is a big chunk of it.
Big chunk.
But it's state waters. It's not their waters. It's state water.
It's state water, but it's under under county.
And they're not going to lose, they don't, they wouldn't have over two hundred people losing their jobs.
But that would be, that would be fishing in Akamak County, in those waters. And what are they trying to do?
It's Monty's understanding that they they're trying to eliminate Manhattan fishing in the entire Chesapeake Bay.
Exactly, but they want to do it in their in their county waters. That's what they're looking for. They're not, they're not looking to do it in Northumberland waters or Lancaster waters. They're looking to do it in Ak- in the Northampton. And they control a large amount of the Chesapeake Bay water, just like Akamak. If Akamak was to follow suit, you'd forget about fishing in the Chesapeake Bay.
That's why that doesn't need to happen.
Yeah, that would.
They played too big of a role in this county for us to not stand beside them.
That is a hundred percent correct. Do we need a motion, anything, or what? What y'all gentlemen want to do?
Sheriff, it was the twelfth, five thirty, right?
I hit five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. All right, we we have anything else before we carry over?
I don't know.
Nothing else. All right. Motion to carry over till, well, August twelfth, five P.M.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.